All right, so as per our agreement, we agreed to get started at the top of the hour. So, good evening, everybody, and welcome. I call to order the March 22, 2021 City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. All right, thank you very much. At this time, are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, before we get started, I just wanted to state that on behalf of our community, I join with the vast majority of Americans in condemning the shootings in Atlanta on March 16th and offer condolences to the victims and their families. Hatred and violence toward our Asian Pacificer Islander community has increased substantially, and it must stop. Justice must and will be served. Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll be receiving a presentation from the Pacific Beach Coalition on their community programs. With us this evening is Lynn Adams, who is the President of the Pacific Beach Coalition. Oh, no.
Hi, everyone. I am so sorry for not unmuting myself. I got into a different screen. Thank you for having me today. I am not, you can control San Carlos. How do I change the screens?
If you click on the screen, then you should start, you should be able to progress the slides by, yep, there you go.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So, the Beach Coalition, basically, I can go back, right? Oops. How do I go back?
It should be controlled the same way you normally would with the PowerPoints. So, going your back key.
Oh, my God.
Okay, Lynn, I can, let me help you here, then.
Oh, thank you.
Just let me know when to progress.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I'm kind of nervous, actually. So, guys, I want to thank Mayor Palmer for having me and for being able to share a little bit about what we do. The Pacific Beach Coalition is dedicated to preserving the ocean, coastal habitat and wildlife, and ending litter through advocacy, education, community building, and citizen action. And we are not just in Pacifica, we're not just on the coast. We actually serve volunteers all over Pacific, all over the Bay Area, and people come from all over the state to come participate in our cleanups, pre-COVID, of course. We were founded in 1997. In 2014, we expanded down the coast to have beach cleanups down the coast and our beaches, and we have a real focus on our streets and our habitat restoration. In 2019, we became our own 501(c)(3), and we changed our name to Pacific Beach Coalition because we serve more than Pacifica. With COVID, we had to rethink all of our actions, so we started a new program called Street to Beach Cleanups, and I'll tell you more about that in a minute. We could go ahead and move forward. So, you know, we're all about plastic, and that's because that's what we find generally on, as litter. Most of it is plastic, and that's the one that's concerning because compostable things degrade into soil. They're not as worrisome, but the plastic breaks down into smaller and smaller pieces of plastic. Plastic is trashing our planet. Here are some statistics that I can certainly share with you, but I don't want to go into it. It's just that it's toxic, it's everywhere. As it breaks into smaller and smaller pieces, we're ingesting it, we're breathing it, we're eating it from the food that we are eating, and we're wasting fossil fuel, and we're creating lots of toxins that emit into the atmosphere, causing global warming, climate change, and we're polluting our ocean and our waterways and our land with the plastic product. And it's costing us billions of dollars to, to, to control, to transport, to get rid of, and all those things. Thank you. Next. So, pre-COVID, we feel that every beach should have a steward. We feel that every park should have a stewardship team, right? One or two people that care about it, that will coordinate other people as they come, be there to handle, to help them clean up the beaches. So, that's been our model, is to have a core group of people, and it doesn't just extend to the beaches, but any, any location that really drew value. It could be a state park, it could be a county park, it could be a city park, it could be a neighborhood. We also restore habitat, and we've enjoyed having lots of school students and businesses come out to restore and remove weeds along our coastal trail between Lindemar and Rockaway, and to replant native plants in there to try to change it over from non-native to native plants that can feed the native ecosystem. We get help from our businesses and employees, from students all over the place. Next slide. I'm going to try to go through these a little quicker because I want to get to the end. We are, in the past, have had Earth Day of Action. We have dozens and dozens of groups that adopt different projects from the coast all the way up to skyline, all the way down the coast to Happy Bay, generally for Earth Day or Action, and people come from all over to join us, to come to our beaches and clean up, to restore habitat, to garden, and we follow it up with an Eco Fest, generally. This year and last year, both were canceled, but we invite educational booths. We gather people at the beach to come, listen to music, to hear speakers, to watch awards, to be together, to learn more about the environment, and then the wonderful programs such as the Marine Mammal Center, or the Shark Stewards, and all these environmental organizations have a chance to share their, their, their programs with the public. Next. We do educational programs. COVID has really helped us to move into the digital age. We've been able to reach people all around the Bay Area and even outside of the state for, to talk about whales, for, we even have a teen group that, that had a talk for their, their peers. They participated, got students all over there, in all their schools, all over the Bay Area, to join in. It was really wonderful. Next. Next. So, cigarette butts are the number-one thing that we pick up, and they're called the gateway litter. And next. So, we work very hard to try to raise awareness about this and to combat it. And so, we've had butt blitzes, and we've asked people everywhere to pick up as many as possible to record them, and we had a contest this past year to paint a bucket, and it was really wonderful in COVID because the families got a chance to do something positive, but they're designed to collect cigarette filters along the coastal trails so that people have a place to put their cigarette butts, as opposed to putting them on the ground, and raise awareness about this. Next. Crazily enough, we collected nearly 247,000 cigarette butts that were counted, and some are picked up that aren't counted, in last year alone. We've recycled well over a million cigarette filters since 2014, and why do we care? Because they're toxic, because they're made of plastic and break down into more and more plastic, and because they kill fish, birds, and wildlife. Next. And next. So, with COVID, we recognize that we can't all come to the beach, and everybody's coming to the beach, and we, it's not safe, and we couldn't have our beach cleanups because we were getting 50 to 100 people. So, our real mission is to get people to come to the beach and then clean up their streets because they recognize litter and recognize that it's coming from our streets to the beaches. So, we created a program called the Street to Beach Program, and as you can see from the map, we have people all over the Bay Area picking up litter and recording the, what they collect. Through the Beach Coalition, we had over 4,000 volunteers clean up over 1,600 miles of trail because this app records it. Last year, we picked up more trash with a third of the number of volunteers that we usually have. We picked up 25,000 pounds of trash from our beaches and streets, not just here in Pacifica, not just on the coast, but all over the Bay Area and up and around the state as well. Next. This is the app that we've asked volunteers to use. It allows you to be a citizen scientist, it allows students to kind of work together as a team, families to work, and we found a lot of people really care about this and have been participating in this. It records the different items that you pick up, it tracks your distance that you cover, and it tracks the weight of what you've collected, and in the end, it awards you lots of badges and things that you can win. Next. And so, this street, this clean swell allows us to get this data, and this is just in the stuff that was recorded, and the masks and gloves, 6,000 personal hygiene masks and gloves, just since June, when we instigated this project. 7,000 bottle caps, 9,500 beverage containers, 15,000 wrappers, and 126,000 cigarette butts. So, it's kind of quantifying what we have, and most of these are all single-use. Next. This is just an illustration of some of the things that we've been collecting and counting, and 758 balloons since June. It's insane, it's, it's not necessary, it's one-use only, and they're very, very damaging. All of these things are very damaging to the environment. And as you can see in the takeout meal, you see a lot of broken-down pieces of plastic, and in the upper left-hand corner, you see all those things of plastic, everything, all plastic, that's what happens as it breaks down into smaller pieces. Next. These are some of the volunteers from the Street to Beach Program, and many of these guys log their mile, log their work and then get community service hours. Next. If they weren't wearing masks, you would probably notice that they're almost all smiling, and it feels good for people to be a part of the solution, to kind of save fish, birds, and wildlife, to know that we're connecting to the planet. That's what really drives us, is because we, we feel like we are connecting people to each other and people to the planet, and we're giving them an opportunity to be earth heroes, and, and they, they often, once they get started, just continue to do this. And we're doing this with people all over the Bay Area and all over the, the state. Next. Next. So, with COVID, we recognize that we can't really get into the schools to do our school assemblies, what we usually do, and we might reach up to 10,000 students, but what we did is we took all the resources that we had put together, and we did it digitally. So, students everywhere and teachers everywhere can use this information packet to share an assembly about albatross, to kind of delve deeper and see all this beautiful artwork, but also to have a digital experience of like, what does it look like when they're dancing? What, what does it look like when they're taking care of their egg? All these videos that they can watch, you know, experiences. And we paired it with information that teachers can use to bring it into their lesson for English, math, science, and they can kind of do a quick click and go, oh, wow, this fits in really nicely in this lesson for this, this thing. And we put a bunch of additional resources together for teachers, families, and parents as well. Next. And we always are looking for ways to get people involved. So, our Street to Beach Program is one, and we've got a lot of people in San Carlos picking up litter. We've had a lot of San Carlos students come to Pacifica, their teachers have sent them to do cleanups before COVID, which is really wonderful. And the litter from San Carlos is some of the litter that we pick up on our beach because it flows out through the bay and then out into the ocean and can come back to us with the, with the ocean. And that's the message that we share when we have a beach cleanup, or when we have a cleanup, and all of our programs are trying to influence people that, to help them understand the flow of plastic and how, wherever it is, it needs to be picked up and can be picked up by you. We're inviting Jackie Spear, who will have a talk on April 1st. Jackie and Josh Becker, our state senator, and also David Canapaw, our county supervisor and the president of the supervisors. So, that's going to kick off Earth Day. We have an albatross talk on Earth Day itself on April 22nd, and we invite people everywhere to take action for Earth Month. We're calling it Earth Month, and we're asking people everywhere to pick up litter, find out what's out there, to garden, to restore habitat, to reduce the use of plastic in their homes, and to help make a difference, and hopefully that, that Earth Day action will translate into other actions throughout the whole year.
Great. Thank, all right. Okay, here. Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much. And so, if somebody wanted to participate in the Street to Beach Cleanup, like my family did last year, Lynn, what's the best way for them to get connected to the program?
I invite everybody to go to www.pacificbeachcoalition.org, and there are resources there for the education, as well as the Street to Beach, and all the other programs for Earth Month. We are having small teams of people come out to adopt the beaches and clean them up on different days in the month of April, that we're arranging for litter removal and pickup sticks, and we're supporting them in any way we can. So, we have a lot of Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, church groups, other groups that we usually support, and we're trying to do that through Earth Month, although it'll be a little different than we have in the past.
Sure. Well, fabulous. Well, thank you, thank you so much for sharing with us all the different ways people can get involved. I know my family did it last year, it was very much, you know, very educational, the app was easy to use. At this time, do any of my colleagues have questions for Lynn at this time or comments? All right. And Crystal, are there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Oh, I see, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dugan, I just saw your hand go up.
Yeah, no, just thank you for the presentation, really nice to see the big overview. I've seen your volunteers out there, and I'll just thank you for the effort. Our beach is needed, and such a beautiful resource for San Mateo County, so thank you.
Thank you. And we do want to be a resource for, for the whole county. Litter is everywhere, and that's our focus.
Excellent.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Lynn, for joining us this evening. And Crystal, are there any comments from the public?
No, there are no hands.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, thank you so much.
Good evening.
All right. Okay. All right. And at this point, we'll move to our next item, which is a proclamation on recognizing equal payday, and our guest this evening is Mary Ann Miato with the American Association of University Women. So, at this time, I'll read that proclamation just to give us a kind of understanding of what this is all about. So, declaring March 24th, 2021, equal payday. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in 2020 typically earned 82% of what men earned, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas, according to graduating to a pay gap in 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings, such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. And whereas, in 2009, the Lilly Led Better Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which gives back to employees their day in court to challenge a pay gap, and now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which would amend the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And whereas, nearly four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their household, and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. And whereas, fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors, and fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas, Wednesday, March 24th, symbolizes the time in 2021 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Laura Palmer Lohan, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 24th, 2021, as equal payday in the City of San Carlos, San Mateo County, California, and urge the San Carlos community to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourages businesses to conduct an internal payout valuation to ensure women are being paid fairly presented this 22nd day of March 2021. Thank you so much. And thank you for joining us, Mary Ann Miato. Would you like to say any, make a few remarks?
Well, I just wanted to say that the Mid Peninsula AAUW Group thanks the council for supporting this proclamation and acknowledging pay equity in the City of San Carlos for all government employees, especially during these post-pandemic times or pandemic times. Women have borne the brunt of economic disadvantage more than ever, as more women have lost jobs due to the fact that they're often in hospitality, retailing, and a lower-paying income, to begin with. But not only that, women also bear the burden, often, of home responsibilities, caretaking responsibilities, teaching children responsibilities. So, many of them have had to either cut back their hours or pass by opportunities for promotion or just quit. So, we really thank the council for acknowledging this and supporting our proclamation.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing awareness to the issue. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none. Well, thank you so much, I really appreciate your joining us this evening. All right, thank you. All right. So, with that, the next item is public comment. So, persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed, as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer to staff, items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for a more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Crystal, is there anyone wishing to make public comment this evening on items not on the agenda?
Yes, I do see two hands. I'll go ahead and admit the first one. Bonnie Howitzin. You should be able to... I'm going to have to promote you as a panelist. Bonnie, you should be able to unmute yourself at this time. Bonnie Howitzin? Okay, well, it looks like she might be having some technical difficulties here, so I can... Bonnie, when you, when you come back, if you want to raise your hand again, yeah, if you want to raise your hand again, then, then we'll, we'll let you speak at that time. So, I'll go ahead and move to the next speaker, who is Joe Driscoll.
Hey, Crystal.
Yes.
I just realized that I skipped over Council Communications and Announcements. My prompts were out of order. So, could we just hop over to those really briefly and then come back to public comment?
Sure.
All right. So, at this time, Council Communications and Announcements are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So, if anybody wishes to report out on Council Communications? Okay. See, I guess I knew there was a reason why I skipped it. All right. So, Crystal, it looks like we can go back to public comment.
Okay, give me one second, pull that back up here. Okay. Joe Driscoll, you should be able to unmute at this time, and you'll have two minutes to speak if you can just use the timer visible on the screen.
Thank you. Did I hit the right button?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, perfect. Good evening, Mayor Councilmembers. I am Joe Driscoll. I reside at 59 Chilton Avenue in San Carlos. Over the past few years, a Chilton master plan has been presented and approved by the public, approved by the Park and Rec Commission, and approved by the 2019 City Council. The Chilton Park Master Plan has been vetted by all those who are concerned. At the February 22nd, 2021 City Council meeting, this same vetted master plan was presented on a slide, slideshow to the City Council and to the public in order to gain approval for the construction bid. However, a different plan was in the council's packet. Because the construction plan differs vastly from the original approved master plan, I am asking and requesting that the City Council put on the agenda for next City Council meeting to reconsider the current construction plan. Earlier today, an email was sent to the council members and city staff. This is a petition signed by 137 concerned San Carlos citizens regarding the changing of the master plan from what it was originally, and originally approved, to what is now the construction plan. We are requesting the City Council to place on this next council's meeting agenda a reconsideration of the current Chilton Park construction plan. I want to thank you guys for your time and also your community service. I know it takes up a lot of your personal time to do what you do, and I hope you'll reconsider our construction plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Next up, we have Chris Frangos. Chris, you should be able to unmute.
Crystal, I see. Councilmember Collins has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to see if maybe Amy could give us an update in response to Mr. Driscoll's comments. And we can do that after public comment if you like, it doesn't matter. I just wanted to give her an opportunity, bring us all up to date on that project.
Yes, why don't we do this? Why don't we go ahead and take public comment and then come back to Amy?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Mr. Frangos, you're up next.
Am I unmuted already, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes, my name's Chris Frangos, I live at 61 Secuia Court, adjacent to the Chilton Park area, and I'd like to also, I second Joe's comments on how the neighborhood here feels about the park. We also like to find out from Amy exactly what's, I understand some things might have been changed already, as some of the emails going around that I saw just recently, so hopefully we can work with the city and just address our couple of concerns that we have, and we'd love to see the park finished and everything come to an amicable conclusion to the progress, and we really appreciate all the work that everybody's done on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, next up, we have Sonia Elks. Sonia, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, this is Sonia. Thank you for taking my call. I just had two very brief comments.
I just had two very brief comments on behalf of streets, safe street advocates in San Carlos. One is that we continue to have concerns about the Arroyo Cedar intersection. The letter received from Public Works indicated some of the changes that we requested were being put into place, but not, not some of the really critical ones. So I'm hoping that when this project is completed, we... It is still in the, in the plans to have a public conversation about that. And also specifically, I'm concerned about the ramps going up the sidewalk and not having a... That don't, that don't make it clear, you know, with some kind of barrier that it's not safe to ride wheels on sidewalks and also possibility of rubber curbs on the street. I'm not comfortable with that. And also not having a lane marking showing that bicyclists should ideally be riding in the street, shared, not shared, but either a bike or a car in the, in the traffic lane. And then secondly, I noticed that Public Works is hiring in a position, and I just wanted to make sure that, and just put out a request that when you hire, when, when there's hiring in Public Works, if there could be at least one person who is also bicyclist in our, who works on our transportation, designs... That's really, really important bicyclists. Play, just check my time here, an advocate who play a really important role in, in street in, in terms of their contribution to traffic projects. They are both vehicle drivers and pedestrians. They're also cyclists. So they tend to see street design from a unique perspective that a person who's mainly a driver or pedestrian doesn't necessarily see. So I just wanted to ask you to make sure that Public Works staff with people who are also avid bicyclists. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you, Sonia. So it looks like we have eight speakers now. The next one is Prasith Levakrishnan.
So why don't we, after this one, Crystal, let's go ahead and have Amy give a response.
Okay. Prasith, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
Yeah, hi there. I'm a resident of 56 Chilton Avenue. My name is Prasad. I'm a neighbor of Joe Driscoll as well. I'm happy to hold off on my comment. Maybe our park director is going to do a response. But my request is the same to reconsider the project plan ideally get it aligned with the original one that was approved in 2019 council.
Thank you, Prasad.
Good evening, Mayor Palmer Lohan, council members and community. Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. I did have the chance, since we've been receiving these comments from the neighbors, to reach back out to our landscape architect and confer with them on some of the changes that the neighbors have requested. And after also consulting with our engineering staff, we have decided that we would be able to replace the concrete with decomposed granite material and also reduce the width of that vehicle pathway from 10 feet to 8 feet. And those seem to address the two main concerns coming from the neighbors.
All right, thank you, Amy.
Okay, so move on. Looks like we have six public speakers left. Bonnie Howitzin? Bonnie, are you able to unmute? Bonnie, it looks like you are unmuted. I don't know. Can't seem to hear you, though. I don't know if you're able to call into the meeting. That might, that might help. If you're able to call into the meeting, the, the information is on the agenda. The phone number and the meeting ID also shows on the screen right now. So if you can try that, we can take you at that time. So I'll go ahead and put you back on hold and, and take the next public commenter here. Karen Rembold, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
Hi, I'm 29 Camborn. I guess I, I'm, I'd be interested still in a, in seeing the... I'm glad that this is being reconsidered by Parks and Rec. And I, I guess I, I, I'd really be curious to see the, the, what the new plan would look like and how it would match the 2019 design. I have, I have young kids who, for whom this is, for whom this park is the, is the major place where, that they play, and it's their, it's their main source of exposure to the, to, to running around in undeveloped land and, and, and playing in trees and on rocks. And, and we just, we wouldn't, we, we hope that any, any considerations of this plan end up allowing this to remain an open, an, an open space that, that, that doesn't invite wheeled vehicles into the park and that, and that remains a safe place for kids to play. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Next is Howe Nash. Howe, you should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, I'm also a neighbor of Joe's and think the original plan for the park is definitely better than, you know, what suddenly happened at your last meeting. And I'm also concerned with, you know, I don't, hopefully, you're not going to put too many new plants and things that require lots of maintenance. I heard that the maintenance budget was going to be $150,000 a year, and that seems kind of excessive. We'd rather have, we'd rather have the park stay as much in, in as much a natural state as possible. And so putting in plants that require continuous watering or cutting or trimming or whatever doesn't seem like something that's necessary. Looking at the old plan, it doesn't look like that's the case. So, you know, I hope that you take that, take that into account. I know you get money from the state for making improvements to the park, but they're not going to provide that 150K a year. And a number of people commented, oh, well, I would do it for 150K. So, you know, just something else to think of in terms of what's, you know, what's going on with the park. And I agree, I just, I would rather not have, you know, any kind of pad, whether it's crushed rock or whatever, that was not in the original plan given in 2019. So anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Howe.
Okay, next we have Augusta Mehta. She should be able to unmute.
Hi there. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks. Yeah, I live at 12 Camborn. I wanted to reiterate the comments to other neighbors and Joe and folks have made. The original plan from 2019 looked great. I've got some young kids as well. And, you know, they, anything that would increase traffic or encourage cyclists to cut through the park would be definitely negative. Also, I'd reiterate Howe's comments on maintenance costs. You know, I'm, I'm always up. If everyone's offering 150K, I can ship it too. So yes, if we can go back to the, the original plan, I think that'd be great. Amy, thanks for addressing it. Would love to see what things are looking like now and just reiterate the concerns of the other neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Augusta.
Next up is Kandash. You should be able to unmute. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So my name is Cheryl, and that's just my email. I'm also a neighbor. Obviously, I'm Howie's wife, and we live at 13 Chilton. And I'm also, I agree with everything that Joe said in his introductory remarks. And we're all in favor of the construction plan of 2019. I understand Amy's making a couple of adjustments. I don't see how, actually, to be honest, I don't see how eight feet versus 10 makes that big of a difference. We really don't want that kind of a path going through the park to begin with or using crushed rock instead of cement. It's still not that, the natural habitat. So we're also in favor of keeping the original plan of 2019 and doing away with the current construction plan. So thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, next up is Alicia Frangos. Alicia, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
Thank you. I, I want to thank Amy for conferring with her engineering and design people and reconsidering. However, the concern that we have is that the, the plans are of this large scale. We don't feel that it's appropriate for any kind of a road to go through the park. If the park is kept in a more natural state, I don't think city vehicles will need to go through the park. Currently, they do the maintenance of the, the garbage can and everything there without driving into the park. And I, I think that would be fine for it to continue without them driving in. So we're opposed to any kind of concrete or crushed granite circle, the roadway through the park. And we really would like to request that the council agendize this and speak about it at another meeting to reconsider going back to the plan that was approved in 2019 or something very similar to that. And I am also concerned, this is the first I heard about the cost of maintenance, and that sounds like a very high cost. So that really concerns me as well. I do have another adult who wants to speak who's at my same computer, so I don't know if that's okay. But we can raise our hand again if that's okay with you. And I also do want to thank everybody for listening to us about this and, you know, hearing us out here about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Next up is Adam. You should be able to unmute. There you go.
Great. Hi, thank you. This is Adam Freiwire. I live at 53 Chilton Avenue. Thanks, council members, Amy, for addressing our concerns and reiterating what other members of our community have, have voiced to the council and to Amy. We really feel like there's a little bit of a disconnect between what the community has been expressing and what the council and has voted for a final plan. This disconnect is, in honesty, a little bit, has made our community dismayed. And I appreciate that there are changes being potentially made from our current petition. But we really ask that this get agendized and also that final plans get, are vetted by the public. This did not occur, we feel, in a full manner for the last construction plans, where actually, you know, honestly, at our most recent community meeting just yesterday, most were not aware of the final plans and that even that a concrete circle was potentially part of the, of the final construction plan. It really begs the question of who is this park for? And we think it's for our community and those who live around Chilton Avenue, along with the greater San Carlos community. And, you know, I think the best sums up, as my 12-year-old daughter is 80, submitted a letter to the council that was part of the petition packet. And in her letter, her one everything she says is measure twice, cut once. This park has been here for over 50 years, and we just want to make sure what we're doing to this park is not going to have a long-term negative impact that takes away from how it's been enjoyed and utilized today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Adam. Next up is Joyce Erby. There you go. Oh. I lost Joyce. Okay, it looks like she just lowered her hand then. Next up then we have is Allison Sullivan.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, Allison, thank you.
Okay, so I grew up on 33 Chilton Avenue, playing in that field for 35 years. And now my twin boys, who are six, play there at least twice a week with my parents still living at 33 Chilton. It is one of our favorite places for the kids to just go play. It's really the safest, most nature-filled park for them. And it's a breath of fresh air to go there and, you know, not have to focus on cars or bikes or motorcycles. And the way people are driving these days down Chilton, I just feel that it would attract more motorcycles, bikes, and whatever else. And these kids would be at risk, and it would take away from the beauty of that park that I remember growing up and playing in. So I guess just, yes, please reconsider for kids. There's really no reason to have a road of any sort in that field. So thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Okay, next up is, looks like we have four more speakers. Bob. I'm going to butcher this. Jarusa. You should be able to unmute. There you go.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. And thank you, Allison. Allison lives across the street from me. And I just want to reiterate what most of my neighbors have been saying, that that is such a, a natural piece of property down there that hasn't been improved and people have enjoyed it for many, many years. And once you lose a natural piece of property and start to develop it in any way, traditionally, it just, it's not natural anymore. And I just really have always appreciated that living here, and I hope it continues that way. And the fact that the city would be saving, I think the improvements proposed right now are over half a million dollars of improvements. That money could, hopefully, we can find something better to spend that money on. So thank you for reconsidering this, council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next up is Julie Anderson. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I, I don't want to repeat too much about what everybody's saying. I live on 79 Club Drive. And in a way, I feel I represent some of the people who are impacted on that road. As we all know, that road can be very fast and unsafe. And I don't know, I just, I, I have a clear memory of my, my kids. Just they walked up my backyard and they opened that gate and walked across the field and met their friends and walked to school and collectively for eight, eight years. And actually, 10 years. And it was, it was, it was the draw that took, that made us purchase there. We loved it. We've been so grateful for the space. It just seems, piggybacking on the, you know, the fact that April is Earth Month, as we've heard from an earlier speaker. And we're at such a fiscally impacted year with everything. And I'm a local school teacher, and it just, all the points that have been brought up have been so pointed that, you know, that money could possibly be allocated somewhere else, especially if the neighbors are not asking for all of those changes, the cement. And, you know, the gate, I, I have heard just through happenstance that that gate that I, my kids walk through will be closed and taken away. And that part I'm unclear of, of when, you know, when we have to fix it, it's up to us, but it could be taken away. That was a confusing message. And we just, we want to work together and we want this to work. We, you know, and we just would like some more open communication. And certainly, I'm so grateful that you guys are hearing us and thank you, everybody, for, you know, looking into this with us. And we just hope that you can keep this on the agenda next time when we look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Next up, I believe Alicia Frangos. You, you have a member in your household that would like to speak. If you can go ahead and unmute and, and provide your name.
My name is Ari Frangos. I also live at 61 Secuia Court. Thank you so much to the council and to Ms. Newby for listening to the community's concerns. I grew up next to the field my whole life. And I've been at college in the past couple of years during the project and only really saw the final plans at the contract confirmation meeting. And honestly, I was already obviously upset because the idea of the beautiful open grasses that I grew up in being filled was very difficult because it's what I grew up with, you know, wherever is to change naturally. But then I heard about the new feature... But then I heard about the new features not on the plans presented at the contract meeting. It was even more upsetting about the road and the concrete circle. And I don't feel, like many of my neighbors, that changing the material or the size is enough presenting a road for bikes and cars and wheeled vehicles to go through a space that has so long been large and safe and open for kids to run free and pedestrians to enjoy is truly unnecessary and only detracts from the utility of the park. And I feel it's very integral to this quiet green space to not have a type of road of any sort. And that maintenance vehicles and other vehicles, I have seen my entire life go through the field with ease. I don't think it would be necessary to have a paved path of any sort. And I hope the council considers removing those entirely rather than just changing the material and the size. I agree strongly with all my neighbors' comments, and this is just such a gem of an open space, and development of any kind really needs to be taken truly seriously. And I hope that council considers bringing it to delay, to reconsider our concerns. And thank you for keeping the place that made my childhood so good available for the next generations. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ari.
Okay, next, we have two left, is Joyce Erby. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, sorry, I was having trouble earlier, and I so appreciate having the opportunity to address the council, and thank you to you and also to Amy Newby for listening to our neighbors' concerns. I don't want to repeat all the wonderful comments that have happened prior to my being able to unmute, because I do agree with all of them, so just go on record to say that I have agreed with my neighbors on the fact that we would like this park to stay as natural of a place as possible. My daughter grew up, as did Aria, in this park, and she's in LA now and was distraught when I told her about the plan, so I'll just go on record to let you know that as well. From my, from my family's perspective, a narrower path, no matter what it's made of, is not ideal. We know that the vehicles, as Aria said, are able to go in, do the maintenance that's needed right now, the mowing, all of that is done. I see the maintenance drivers almost every morning that go to empty the trash can, they go in, there's a turnabout on our street, they are able to turn around with ease, and they go back out again. So I know that there's no problem there as well. You know, I literally just posted on Facebook this morning pictures of the wildflowers growing in that park. And so if I, it's not an understatement to say between seeing the deer in the park, the wildflowers, the fact that, you know, we've got owls in there, we've got, you know, just all kinds of critters walking through there all the time, that I would be very sad to see very much done to it. Although I am also aware that we do have new neighbors who may appreciate having a top lot or something that is maybe a little bit more catering to the smaller children. So I could understand having something to that effect as long as it requires very little maintenance, as long as it doesn't detract from the natural beauty and is in a space that isn't disturbing to our neighbors and does not have benches that face into the neighbors' homes. And I also would like to go on record asking for city council to agendize this at the next city council meeting or one upcoming, to take another look at the plans, because I would support the prior plans but not the current ones. Thanks so much for your time. Very much appreciate that San Carlos is a city of good living that does listen to the neighbors and we have a point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
And looks like our final speaker is going to be Mary Keely. Mary, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
Thank you, and thank you so much for listening to our concerns. I agree with everything that's already been said, and I quite frankly don't understand why the plans that were approved in 2019 have been seemingly arbitrarily changed, and I find that disturbing. So I hope that this item will be agendized for the next meeting, and I thank you for listening to our concerns.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. And that looks like she was our last speaker. Madam Mayor, I believe she was our last speaker.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so let's move on to the consent calendar. Are there, is there any members of council who wish to pull an item from their consent calendar? All right, well, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve the item, what, seven, the consent calendar items A through J.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Okay, Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Before I vote, I just want to congratulate my former colleagues on the planning commission, Jim Iacconi and David Roof, for their good service on the planning commission, and I'm glad to see them re-upped for three additional years. They've been working hard there, and it's appreciated. And Kristen Clements, who stepped into my old seat, she's just been extended three more years as well, so we're glad to have her there. And then Shannon Bergman, our EDAC committee, re-upped for an extended period as well. So appreciate all their public service. Thank you. With that, I vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Perma Loehmann?
Yes, and I would also like to extend my thanks to all of those who are stepping up, Prinita Ballback, Kristen Clements, Jim Iacconi, David Roof, Mark Maxwell, and Mark Maxwell. And I'm also glad that it looks like we're going to be bringing back the goats this year. So, all right. Now we will receive a report to council. The report to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So with that, I believe Jeff Maltby, the city manager, will be providing us with an update on COVID-19.
Hi, it's me instead. This is Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. Crystal, if you'd move forward one slide, I'd appreciate that. This is the update from March 9th, our last council meeting to today. The only thing of note, which actually is significant, is county moving into the orange tier, which has opened up more of our businesses. And so that's just wonderful news. We also look forward to moving into the yellow when the time comes, if that's possible. As long as the numbers continue to be good, like they are now, we might see ourselves in the yellow tier. But the orange tier brings us more mall retail stores opening, personal care services have reopened, entertainment centers now can be open with 25% capacity, museums, zoos, and aquariums have 50% capacity, places of worship at 50%, movie theaters at 50%, gyms and fitness center at 25%, restaurants indoors at 50%, and wineries can have 25% inside. And also allowed outdoors are bars, breweries, and distilleries with modifications, and playgrounds and other outdoor recreational facilities. It should be noted that the masking and social distancing is still encouraged. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Councilmember Collins, and then Rack, and then Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tara, is there, do you know of any reliable place we can go to get the daily COVID new infection numbers? Of all places, I check the Weather Channel every day. They have a little report, but it's not always accurate. Does the county have a sort of a daily update that I can find?
Yeah, the county does. Nicole, do you want to provide that link? I don't happen to have it right here.
Yeah, actually, if you just go back to the slide we were on, I believe the county's website is there, scgov.org.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't see that.
Oh, all right. So, and I can find it there. All right.
Yeah, just, yeah, you can find it under COVID, and they've got all the best information for our county.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Nicole.
Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just wondering, I know that going back to February, there's a few potential enforcement actions that were being looked at, and I was wondering if I could get an update on that.
Greg, are you able to answer that?
I need to check on that, because we were waiting to see if the county made any findings, violations on the couple of incidents that we heard about that happened. There, I think the Valentine's Day, there was a warning issued to the restaurants by the county, but the follow-up incidents that were identified in video, I need to follow up with the county on that.
Thank you, Greg. We'll get back to you. We'll get a, Greg will get a message to you, to council, with that information.
I think I forgot to mention that, you know, just as a reminder to the council, we did issue a warning to the violators on the Valentine's Day event regarding our outdoor parkland permits. And so we're insisting on compliance with all the COVID-19 county and state rules for the restaurants that have received a warning.
I'd suggest we make this a element of our next COVID report at our next meeting.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you. And, yeah, thank you, Tara. It's a, it's a good update. It's nice to get this succinct update every couple of weeks. And obviously, the progress we've made as a community is very heartening, and it's great to see the vaccine rolling out and things moving in the right direction. I also note, we get a good summary after the bi-weekly county-level COVID meetings. The organizers of that sent out a very complete update as well. And I would just ask my fellow council members if we still, whether or not we still find value in that kind of personal note-taking exercise that I think the council kicked off in the early days. I know I personally don't find value in that. So, you know, I would be, I would suggest we rely upon the good city and county updates and get away from that practice, but I throw that out there. I'm certainly happy to do my part if people still find value in that.
I'm sorry, Greg, is that something that we can discuss now, or is that something that needs to be proposed as an agenda item?
I think that would be something that the council would need to brief it, to look at, about your preferences for.
All right, so Councilmember Dugan, if that's something you can bring up later in the meeting under agenda setting, that would be appreciated.
Sure. Would that, that ask to be an agenda item, or that can be discussed at the agenda-setting place?
Well, the agenda-setting item is for the purpose of having a general discussion about whether to agendize something. There, we could, I mean, I could look into the issue and provide you with a memorandum on the subject rather than have it come to a meeting potentially. But if you want to make a decision, it should be at a meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Okay, I'm not seeing any additional comments or questions from council at this point, Crystal, or is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
No, there aren't.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll go to our next item, which is a study session on discussing COVID-19 hazard pay for grocery and drugstore workers. And it appears that we have a presentation from Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager, tonight.
Tara, you're on mute.
Yes, Jeff wanted to say a couple of words first.
Sorry, my computer was frozen. Yeah, I just wanted to introduce this item before Tara gets you into the details. As you know, this came up at our last council meeting, and we've moved it forward quickly, so I just wanted to put it in context in terms of what we've provided for you. There's several ordinances that we've been able to locate in our county that are included in your packet, as well as a brief description of how they work, and Tara can walk you through the details of that briefly. We also did our best to take a look at what other cities had discussed if they chose not to move forward with the ordinance. There's also just a little brief information there about what we know about the legal landscape on this issue to date, and it does seem to be, that aspect does seem to be changing pretty quickly. And I'm sure our city attorney can help fill you in if you have any additional questions there. With that, I'll turn it over to Tara. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. So, the pandemic has had an impact on frontline workers, and in response to this, at the last council meeting that Jeff mentioned, council asked us to look at what the other agencies in the county are doing on this subject, and to come back to council. And so Nicole McDonald, myself, and Greg Rubens all contacted all the cities as well as the county to get an update on this topic. So, the local government response, when we did the survey, we understood from all of the agencies that none of them looked at any other frontline or essential workers. They focused just on grocery and drugstore workers for this hazard pay. Some of the councils have discussed this issue in, during a council meeting. Others have not yet taken it up, or some don't plan to. Included in your packet this evening is a spreadsheet with the information we gathered from each city, as well as the county, which will give you some information on what we were able to obtain. Go to the next slide here. So the city ordinances that you have are from Daly City, Millbrae, San Mateo, and South San Francisco. These are the four agencies of the 21 in the county that have moved forward with an ordinance. Each of them recently passed an urgency ordinance, which is a temporary but quick solution to getting these workers paid as quickly as possible. The ordinance is, they're all in the packet, but you'll find that in our spreadsheet, we summarize some of the highlights from each of them, just for your ease in understanding what they contain. Redwood City is the only agency that is planning to move forward, other than these four, with an ordinance. They are going to be bringing both a regular and an urgency ordinance before their council in April. Sorry. Okay, so potential businesses impacted in San Carlos. By looking at the way the other agencies categorized, the employers that would be covered under this ordinance, we determined that these five businesses would be subject to this ordinance if the council deems that it likes, wants to move forward and likes what the other cities have included. Each of these businesses have provided some additional pay to their employees during the pandemic, and I'm going to give you a brief summary of each. Trader Joe's, at the beginning of the pandemic, increased salaries to their workers by $2 an hour as a thank you premium. And then effective February 1st of this year, they increased it to $2, another $2. So the total compensation for the pandemic is $4 an hour. For CVS, they provided a one-time bonus back in March of 2020, ranging from $150 to $500, depending on the employee classification. And that's the only thing they have done that we learned thus far. Lucky's increased the hourly wage anywhere from $2.50 to $3.50 per hour, and that was effective back on March 8th of 2020. No end date was indicated, however, they did indicate that it would be in effect until the COVID-19 crisis was over. Walgreens provided a one-time bonus back in April of 2020 for $300 for full-time and $150 for part-time workers. And finally, Dollar Tree, which does have some food service, they had a company-wide report that since March of 2020, they've invested more than $200 million in providing its hourly store and distribution center employees with wage with wage premiums. However, we don't know what that works out to on a per-employee basis. So, the elements of the ordinance to consider include hazard pay, which each of the four cities that have passed an ordinance have selected $5 per hour. And then there's the ordinance type. It could be a regular ordinance or an urgency. As we know, urgency can, urgency ordinance can be implemented quicker, but they do have just a short duration. For example, San Mateo and South San Francisco both selected 90 days duration for their ordinance. And Daly City and Millbrae selected 120 days. The covered employees, employers for this, for their ordinances all were national retail grocers or drugstore companies with anywhere from 500 to 750 employees nationwide. The covered employees were any full-time or part-time employee. And enforcement for each of these cities varied. They, some have very minimal enforcement plans. Some are planning to use their existing enforcement powers of other ordinances. And depending on the number of businesses subject to a city ordinance, enforcement may require additional staff to acquire and process the covered employer personnel records and ensure that hazard pay has been implemented and received by the covered employees. The city attorney could also be empowered to enforce violations of the ordinance as a misdemeanor, infraction, or as a civil law violation. Finally, there's some additional provisions that these cities took in addition to these other items listed above. For example, South San Francisco made the ordinance retroactive to the beginning of its council's discussions on the topic. And the three cities of San Mateo, Millbrae, and South San Francisco included paid time off for its employees to obtain their COVID-19 vaccinations. So, there are legal issues, as Jeff has mentioned. And a number of cities have been sued upon passage of this ordinance, including Daly City and San Jose, as a couple close to us. These suits are coming from the California Grocers Association. They claim that these ordinance are unconstitutional for a few reasons. The first is that covered employees are treated differently than other essential workers in violation of equal protection laws. Second, the city hazard pay raise violates the National Labor Relations Act by allegedly interfering with collective bargaining rights of employers. And three, it could raise the cost of groceries. And it should be mentioned that Kroger Stores, which is a nationwide grocer down in the south of the state, closed three stores in the Los Angeles area, claiming it was because of the increased costs of these hazard pay ordinances. Labor groups counter that these large grocery chains have been paying hazard pay, and they did so last year, but have discontinued it. They also contend that grocery chains can afford it because their profits grew as a result of the pandemic. They also argue that hazard pay is necessary to justly compensate retail food workers for the clear and present dangers of doing their jobs during the pandemic to ensure the welfare of workers and continue stable operation of the food supply. We also wanted to just bring a couple of items to the council's attention. I know there was discussion at the last meeting about vaccines and availability to the grocery and drugstore workers. We thought we would mention that all grocery and drugstore workers are eligible for vaccines. The city has no authority to prioritize any of these individuals for the vaccine, but we have been posting information on our website, as well as social media, on where people can get vaccines and who is eligible. And also, vaccines have been arriving and distributed to drugstores and some larger grocers who have been able to distribute it to their staff, as well as the public. There are no numbers available to us on how many of these workers have or have not been vaccinated, nor how much of the vaccine is available to them. So, finally, council options this evening are to direct staff to prepare an ordinance, either regular or urgency, for your consideration with the following provisions: hourly increase, a definition of covered employees, a definition of covered employers, a consideration of retroactivity, a consideration for covered employers who are voluntarily paying hazard pay or providing hazard pay to other kinds of essential workers or other types of compensation. Council can also elect to support a countywide program if the county does move forward with an ordinance. Council can also establish a subcommittee, as many city has, to study the issue further before taking any action. And of course, council can direct staff to take no action. And with that, Nicole, myself, and Greg are here to answer any of your questions.
Great, thank you, Tara. So, any questions from council on this? Councilmember Rack?
And I had one question, Madam Mayor, but also just want clarification. Are we going to have questions? What sort of the process here? I just want to understand what the process is going to be for the next.
Yeah, thank you for asking. So, yes, so I thought what we would do is questions, public comment, and then council comment. Does that work for everyone? I think that was what we agreed to going into this new season of meetings.
That's fine with me. I did have a question I wanted to ask. I think, appreciate staff's work in this short time period and turning things around. Can you, a couple of questions, just one. Have we, was there any outreach directly to this? It looks like we're talking about five to six stores. Was there any outreach directly to any of these stores? Or was it all just sort of information gathered from other? I'd just be curious to see what, if we did talk to them, what their reaction was.
We did not. We wanted to definitely hear from council first on this issue before reaching out to the businesses here in town. So, yes, the information we gathered was either gathered from other cities or were other information that was out, some reports and other things of that nature. But no, we did not reach out directly.
Okay. And then, it sounds like from this, I understand there's been a number of different lawsuits, but I've seen that so far, none of them have been successful to date. Is that accurate?
I'll let Greg answer that.
Yes, that's, that's correct. In the case involving Long Beach in Southern California, a federal judge denied their request for a preliminary injunction stating enforcement of the urgency ordinance that was enacted there. And I have not heard whether or not the Grocers Association has appealed that decision. But it's at the, just as basic procedural on these cases, that's at a very early stage of the case. But the judge in that did make a finding that the Grocers Association was not likely to prevail on the merits. And they would have, the judge would have had to find that in order to grant the preliminary injunction.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember McDowell? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Greg, I have more questions for you about the potential legal repercussions. I'm wondering if you have an update on the lawsuit in Daly City, number one? And then, number two, do you kind of have an idea of how long, if we were to be sued, how long that might take? Would we need to hire special counsel? What would we be looking at in legal fees?
Okay, well, I don't have an update on the Daly City case. I think that's also at the very early stage. I did not hear that they applied for a preliminary injunction, but I can get back to you on whether or not the Grocers Association applied for that before the judge that's hearing that case. Federal court cases are assigned to a particular judge, so the judge would be assigned to it. And then the judge would have set a hearing date. So, I would think just the timing that that date may not have arrived yet, even if they had requested preliminary injunction to stop enforcement. Time for a lawsuit to get through the courts, it can take quite some time. It can take, you know, to get through the federal, the trial court level, probably would take at least a year, I would think. And then, appeals at different procedural steps can delay cases quite a bit. We probably would be hiring a special counsel to specialize in federal court litigation. There are, there are many that are on our defense panel that we might be able to bring into this case. The cost to the city, I mean, it depends on how the cases are laid out. But my, my guess is this, because this would be an ordinance, it would not be a claim that would be covered by our coverage memorandum with Plan JPA. But I would certainly make an attempt to see if there was coverage under our coverage memorandum. So, that's, the cost can vary to the city because of that. If we did have coverage in a defense, then our costs would be lower. But if we didn't have coverage, it would all be on the city's responsibility to pay for the defense of the proposed or potential ordinance. And, you know, as far as assessment of the, of the legal theories in the case, I would probably leave that to a closed session with the council, if we get to that point.
Okay. Do you, do you have a ballpark of, I mean, I think this is an important, an important number for us to ponder?
Well, I mean, again, I, I think it's questionable whether we would have coverage for the passage of an ordinance. But let's, if we did have coverage, then our liability would be limited to the $100,000 that is the self-insured retention with Plan JPA. If we didn't have it, I think, I can't really tell you exactly, but it would be over, probably over a quarter of a billion dollars if we had to go through a defense and a trial. Might be more if it was, if it was appealed. But then there might be, the countervailing thing is there's a lot of other cities that are also involved. So, there might be an ability to pool resources with other cities because the claims will be similar.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, it does strike me that what we're considering here, hazard pay for only grocery workers, only grocery workers who work in certain large employers is pretty narrow. Are there examples? I don't think so in the county. But did staff observe any examples from elsewhere in California or anywhere of a more equitable type hazard pay that would involve more than just a very narrow set of employees like that?
Well, we were asked to look at the county, so we didn't really look outside the county. I know Greg was looking at a couple of lawsuits from other portions of the state, but I don't know if that was part of what he was able to research. Did you find out anything, Greg, on that?
No. My understanding is that this hazard pay, these hazard pay proposals are being supported across the state, and they're very similar. I have not heard of any more broadly-applied ordinances. I mean, some are urgency, some have proposed bringing them forward in the ordinary order. Some have slightly different impacts, like the retroactivity. For example, one of the cities, South San Francisco, did. That has, that has an effect too on the, how the proposed hazard pay would be applied and how much is involved.
I see. And I suppose this was put on our agenda in this somewhat narrow way. But the, is there any, you know, is there any research, any evidence? I mean, I know the grocery workers have certainly been exposed, and it has been a hazardous year for them. But, you know, was there a level of hazard greater than other frontline workers, like healthcare workers or others that are out there? Do we have any evidence or research? I mean, I'm just kind of curious, why has this become kind of a grocery employee program as opposed to really looking at all frontline workers? Is there anything behind that? Or, you know, that's what I'm, I'd like a better understanding of.
I think Greg alluded to it, is that it seems to have come from the association or somebody related to grocery and drugstore workers. Am I correct, Greg? Because that's all that anybody has dealt with. They have not looked beyond that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if it's something directly from labor or if it's from the workers themselves being supported by labor. I mean, so each one of those scenarios is possible, but it's definitely, its genesis is definitely in the grocery worker area. And that those workers feel that they, they've been exposed to a greater risk. And there is some data, I think it's in the staff report, that the grocery, grocery workers' rate of infection is higher than the population. But I don't know if they're higher than other essential workers that have worked throughout the pandemic. I'm not her best statistic.
Okay. So, I guess there's some chance, if we did move forward with this, we would have to consider other similar programs for other categories of frontline workers. Is that an accurate thought?
We could get that information for you to see if there is any, any other categories of workers that have received the benefit of such an ordinance.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, all right. Any other questions at this point? All right, I think everybody's addressed the ones that I was thinking about, so I appreciate that. Crystal, why don't we go to public comment, and then we'll come back to council discussion comments?
We do have one at this time. Richard Hedges, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. I spoke to you at the last meeting and outlined the reasons. Like by now, we've had 80,000 members nationwide and over 3,000 members locally that have been infected. But about the risk, people are usually go by grocery stores four times a week. Not so much during the pandemic, but there's a lot more turnover of customers per week when you're doing your EIRs and put a grocery store in a development. That comes out clearly. Yesterday, a Seattle judge dismissed the Grocers Association suit there. So, that has been dismissed. I sent you all an email. Hopefully, it got through the spam. About three or four hours ago, we had a shooting that killed several people in a Kroger store in Boulder, Colorado. We've had members spat upon. We've had members punched. They're definitely in the line of fire, especially when asking people to put on their mask. So, I would appreciate it if you would consider at least 90 days on this. As far as other companies target, some of the cities have set it up. So, with grocery of 10,000 square feet or more brings target into it for their grocery workers. So, if you could please bear with me and see your way clear to do this, you would affect a lot of people in a very positive way that have a very hard time even living here. When I first came to California as a grocery worker, I could afford to buy a house in San Mateo County. Now, two grocery workers living together, full-time workers, can barely, if at all, rent an apartment, which gives them long commute. They deserve this. They've suffered throughout this whole pandemic. And I hope you'll find it in your kindness to make sure that they are granted this hazard pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Crystal, is it anyone else who should need a public comment?
Yes, we've since had two more. So, Leon Wong, you are up next.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Leon with UFCW Local 5, and we represent thousands of groceries and pharmacy workers in the Bay Area. I just wanted to voice out for our essential workers regarding hazard pay. I understand that a lot of people is comparing grocery workers, comparing to medical workers, and why only the grocery workers and the pharmacy workers are included in this hazard pay ordinance that other cities. And why only the grocery workers and the pharmacy workers are included in this hazard pay ordinance that other cities are passing. I mean, due to the high volume of customers and people that they encounter every single day. Puts them at high risk of COVID exposure. When compared to like bank workers and other industry workers, they don't have that type of traffic compared to grocery workers. I mean, everybody has to go to grocery stores to buy their food, their groceries. And they have to go to pharmacies to pick up their drugs, their medication that they need every day, every week. And they really need the extra money that this hazard pays providing for them. And not only, it can help them pay their bills and pay their debt sooner, buy more food for their family. They can also buy extra PPEs that their employers fail to provide. And it's very important because PPE is what's keeping them safe at the grocery stores at work. And a lot of stress is upon these workers while facing customers. Cause there's always angry customers refusing to, to wear masks, there's shoplifters. And it's increasing every single day and, and, and it's, and it's just a very dangerous and hazardous environment that all workers are facing every single day. And they're not giving up serving our community, even during this very difficult time. And average, they're only making fifteen to nineteen dollars an hour, and they deserve more. And especially in this pandemic time, they deserve more than ever. So I would really appreciate that you guys considered passing an urgency ordinance for hazard pay for these workers. Thank you very much for letting me speak today.
Thank you, Leon.
Okay, and last, we have Julie Lin.
Thank you. Julie with the San Mateo Labor Council. Nice to see everyone this evening. Our grocery and drugstore workers have been on the front line since day one of the pandemic, having some of the greatest degree of exposure. While all of our frontline workers are doing heroic work in their various industries. The motivation behind this work group is rate of pay and degree of exposure. Over two thousand members of our own UFCW Locals Five and Six Forty Eight, which represent our grocery and drugstore workers in the area, have contracted COVID nineteen. The national infection rate in the industry is one worker out of every five. Chain stores continue to rake in record profits, almost none of which they invest in the workers to make it possible. These employees who make on average between fifteen and nineteen dollars an hour. And who are physically interacting with the public throughout the entirety of their shifts, as they've never had the work from home opportunity. That so many of us have been able to utilize as a protective measure, have taken on extra job duties relative to COVID protocols without additional compensation. Are faced with workers who refuse to follow the mask mandates or respect social distancing. Long go exhausted any paid leave to care for themselves or family members that become exposed to or contract COVID. And are enduring huge health and safety risks to provide uninterrupted food and medication access to our communities. For these reasons, we're asking you to institute hazard pay for these workers. The same hazard pay most of these employers paid for a period last year. We respectfully request that you consider an emergency ordinance that mirrors that passed in Daly City, South City, San Mateo. And Milbrae, and the ordinance can sunset ninety or one hundred twenty days from implementation. Which will hopefully allow all these workers time to get the protection of being vaccinated. Though these workers are eligible, the vaccine supply is nowhere near what the county or local providers need. To be able to vaccinate all eligible populations expeditiously. We also ask that you include four hours of paid leave for these workers to get those vaccines. It's my hope that you choose, as I said, to mirror the actions of your four other local cities and hopefully Redwood City, who takes this up on the twelfth. My colleagues and I are happy to help however we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
And she was our last speaker.
Okay, all right, so we'll open up for discussion. Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I'll start. And so I, I just wanted, you know, share with everybody that under normal circumstances. I would not support inserting government into the relationship between employers and their employees. However, we all know, these are not normal times. As I've shared previously, I brought this item forward to council when I learned about the, the fact that the grocery store workers. Are at much higher risk of contracting COVID, one in five compared to one in a hundred, which we heard again this evening. I echo the sentiments that these essential workers on whom we've depended throughout the pandemic are typically at the lower end of the pay scale. They were receiving hazard pay prior and it was discontinued. And while these workers are eligible for vaccines, it will take time out of their workday to get vaccinated. And also, we don't know exactly when that supply will be made available. The, the first value to which the council recently committed is fostering a safe, diverse, welcoming and engaged community. That recognizes the value of social equity. And as we've all worked on, you know, many issues in our community, especially with respect to housing, I think it's fair to say that. Some of these workers probably would live in San Carlos if they could afford to do so, but my guess is that they probably don't. So these are all the factors that moved me to invite the question about what we can do to support those who have been serving our community so heroically. And I am hopeful that we can move to an emergency ordinance to help compensate some of these individuals. So with, with that, it looks like Councilmember Collins, you had some remarks?
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I beg to disagree. I don't know how many platitudes, I don't know if platitudes, but. Common sayings apply to this, slippery slope. Cucan of worms, we just don't know where it'll go. I thought that one of the speakers made a good point, that he said that the stores weren't providing the protection. Well, they need to provide better protection. I just don't think that. We as a, as a small town, which we're, we don't compare to any of the other towns. Should be inserting ourselves between labor and management. And I say this as the son of a grocer, who was a, he was a grocer for nearly thirty years, so I am sensitive for that. But to me, this is really a labor management issue. This is something we should have done, what, ten months ago or so? But I really think the stores really ought to step up and provide the protection. The, the workers deserve it. I have a problem with us mandating it. Not to mention the, the staff time that it would take when it comes to enforcement, as said in the staff report. How do you enforce this? And if you don't enforce it, then the whole thing becomes a joke. That, that really bothers me, is that we would be putting something in place. That we may not be able to enforce. You know, people may forget that we have fewer staff. Per resident than any other city in the county. Our staff's already overworked. And, and it just, it, it concerns me that we would be adding another level of burden onto them. And we haven't even talked yet about the legal issues, or I haven't. I thought Greg did a good job of that. As I said, it's, it, it's a, it's an un, it's, it's an unknown road that we go down. Even if we win, I don't want to spend the money fighting a lawsuit that we shouldn't have to fight in the first place. To me, it just doesn't make, it doesn't make sense at all. I, you know, these things just tend to take on a life of their own. I do think that the workers should be given time off to get a shot. That's just basic, but why, why should we have to tell the owners of the stores that they need to do this? I think we should probably, I, I wouldn't mind passing a resolution that encourages them to do it. I think that's probably the better course. But I think that it, it's, it's a terrible idea to go down the road of, of telling these stores that they need to. That they, that they need to pay their workers, money that they should already be paying, even if it's for a short period of time. It just, to me, it just doesn't make any sense. I mean. Four hours of paid leave, they can do that. I mean, I don't think we should have to tell them to do that. So I, I, I had a couple other points, but I want to give other people a chance to talk. But I, I'm not in favor of this. When I was looking at all of our options, the last one to me that makes the most sense, take no action.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Councilmember Rec?
Madam Mayor, I just want to remind the, the council that we're just talking, this, this is just a study session. And, you know, you, you don't actually have an ordinance in front of you at this time, but you. I want to make sure just we kind of remember that's the type of item we have before us tonight.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate Ron's comments. I, I, I guess I. I, I spent a lot of time thinking about this issue and, you know, council member Dugan mentioned sort of the narrow scope on this. And kind of how the impact is on only a certain segment of the population. You know, and we recently raised the minimum wage to increase that across the board, because we felt that was the right thing to do. Across our community. But I guess I, what I struggle with is understanding, and, and Ron, you, you kind of said this, you, you said. They should be doing this, but if they're not doing it, then maybe they need to, to be pushed to do it in a way. That, to do the right thing. I think, you know, some of these stores have been doing the right thing and, and some started and stopped. And so that's sort of where I struggle with this because. I do think the grocery store workers and the pharmacy workers and drugstore workers are, are in a very challenging position. And so we, we look at, need to look at ways to support them. So I, I want to hear it from the rest of my colleagues, but I, I, you know, I'm, I'm. Sort of, I'm certainly open to supporting an ordinance around this to, to do this that's tailored and, and very narrow. And, and has a, a time limit on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rec. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and just a couple of quick statements, just first. You know, I absolutely believe in the dignity of labor. I think anyone who gets up and puts in an eight-hour day, a forty-hour work week. Absolutely deserves a living wage, absolutely. I would like, you know, we're all passionate about housing on this council. I'd like to see us get enough housing done. That even our minimum wage could get people into fair housing, whether that's affordable housing or what, or, or what, whatnot. But, you know, I'm proud of the work San Carlos has done recently on our minimum wage. And went into effect in January of this year, fifteen twenty-four is where it's at. It'll be tied to cost of living hereafter. If that's not enough, I, I would rather revisit that, you know. I do share the value we have as a community on, on equitableness. And, you know, a minimum wage is that. It's across the board. It helps the people at the lowest rung. I don't find what's before us tonight to be equitable. I, I think we're singling out a very small handful of employers perhaps. I think it only will help a relatively very small set of our employees. And, and I am troubled by the narrowness of that and how that isn't particularly equitable. And, and I, I don't even understand how it would be rolled out. I know it could be further studied. But, you know, doesn't make sense for someone making, you know, for management in those organizations to, to have a raise as well. And, and maybe that could be, could be structured. You know, I certainly have great empathy for what all of our frontline workers have done. And absolutely, the, the grocery store workers have done in the past year. I would, you know, as far as the hazard, I'm certainly glad the vaccine is coming soon. And that they're already eligible for it, very rightfully so. And, and, and the other thing I would just say is, we might have another option soon. I know the. The, that the American Rescue Plan Act has authorized significant funds. And, and I understand significant funds could even come to San Carlos soon. It is going to municipalities and, and that act, when municipalities receive funds, only lists four things. That municipalities can spend that money on. And I, for one, think all that money should be directly spent in our community to help people who are struggling. And, and the second thing on that list says, for premium pay to eligible workers performing essential work during the pandemic. Providing up to thirteen dollars per hour above regular wages. And so I, I just, if as a community, we feel like we need to help those folks, then I think as a community, we need to help them. And if we get relief act dollars, we can directly help them. And, and to me, that feels more equitable than requiring. Five, six, seven employers to help a limited number of employees in town. So for those reasons, I, I, I don't support this at this time.
Thank you, John. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. And I thank you for giving us the opportunity to discuss it as a council. I certainly recognize the efforts of our essential workers in grocery stores. Who really have put their health on the line during the pandemic to serve the public. And I'm deeply appreciative of their service to our community. In reviewing the packet, staff wrote that, you know, we have two grocery stores here in San Carlos. We have Lucky and Trader Joe's, and they're both currently offering one form of hazard pay. So, and, and they're doing this on a company-wide basis. It's not city by city. And I think that that is the right and fair thing to do, that's equitable across their workers and their company. The threat of substantial legal fees to defend ourselves in federal court, as Greg mentioned, gives me pause. As Ron mentioned, we are a very small city. And, you know, last year, we had to make some really tough budget cuts, including laying off some employees. And I don't want to be faced with that again. And I'm not sure that budgetarily, we can take this on right now. You know, we are a much smaller town than the other cities that have taken this on. I do value policies that apply broadly. We, as Adam said, we increased the minimum wage, which helped all workers in our city. I think that was really important and a, a strong message of support that we made. The governor just signed SB ninety-five, requiring all California employers of twenty-five employees or more. To provide COVID nineteen supplemental paid sick leave, which appears to be something that the other cities were trying to address. And now it's been addressed statewide, which seems like a more equitable solution to me as well. So I'm, and I am a little bit concerned since we haven't reached out to the employers directly in San Carlos. Which I understand was a, you know, just a timing issue. I worry about the unintended consequences. I read about the Trader Joe's hazard pay. And, you know, in order to accomplish the four-dollar. Company-wide increase for a limited amount of time. Trader Joe's employees had to give up their mid-year raises this year, which would have been permanent. So I just, I question, I'm trying to think through what are the unintended consequences of this action? Is this something that, you know. Is really going to, to solve the problem? And I, I, again, definitely want to support our essential workers. I appreciate the idea that Councilmember Dugan had about any funds that come to the city and we could revisit this. In a more, you know, in a way that would, would help those who need it most. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So Ron, I'll get to you in a second, but I just want to address some of the feedback that I've heard. So I just, you know, I think there was, you know, some, some question around, you know, the timing of this. And I think that the bottom line is that there's never a, a wrong time to do the right thing. In addition, we don't really know where COVID is going to go with these various variants. And again, the vaccines are not rolling out as we had expected. I think there'd be an opportunity, you know, to your point, Vice Mayor McDowell, if these, since we know that some of the stores. That would be implicated in this ordinance are already giving some form of hazard pay, that a credit could be attributed to that. But some of the stores listed are not, from, from what we understand, offering that. And in terms of the scope, I think the scope was, you know, very narrowly defined and justified with respect to the, to the dwell time. And the number of visits that, that the workers are exposed to on a, on a daily basis. And the fact that, you know, these, you know, everybody's going grocery shopping now. So the, the, the profits are definitely up and, and the dollars are there. So I think, you know, again, it's, it's, to, to me, this is, you know, an aspect of this is, like I said, I think it's a gray area. And what role should the city play in this? And as, you know, Councilmember Collins, as you suggested, you know, these stores should be doing these things, but some of them are not. And in much the same way that we're called upon, for example, to enforce. And in much the same way that we're called upon, for example, to enforce the physical distancing requirements in our downtown corridor, this to me feels akin to that. This, in my mind, is about safety. And, you know, we've also, you know, I agree, we've done the minimum wage. We've also taken action in the past, for example, when some of the tenant protections were changing and there was a gap in a period of time, and we stepped in for a brief moment. So I, you know, from my perspective, this is, you know, a point in time where we could meet the moment and, you know, help those in our community who serve our community and have been doing so courageously and under great duress. So, Councilmember Collins, your hand was up and I see you took it down. Did you have any further comment?
No, I was just, something Adam said just prompted me to think of something. You know, one of the things we didn't even talk about is potential layoffs. You know, every action has a reaction. And we could be defeating the purpose if we put more pressure on businesses than should be applied. Businesses should do a lot of things. And, you know, they ought to provide better protection for their workers. They ought to provide better hours. They ought to provide better working conditions. And there's just so many things that businesses should do that are unrelated to this pandemic. And, you know, when it comes down to it, it's really, this is between employees and employers. It's between management and, in this case, the union. I just think that, you know, we get into this and we, as other speakers, you know, council members have pointed out, we get into unintended consequences if we get legal action. I'm not, I'm not inclined to pick fights when we don't need to pick them. And this, I don't feel this is a fight we need to pick because there's just so many unpredictable outcomes of it. If things, if we have a different scenario in a couple of months, that's worse. Maybe we want to talk about it again. But as Councilmember Dugan pointed out, there's a lot of federal help coming out, coming down. Sarah pointed out, there's a lot of state help coming down. I'm not sure that this, at this point, makes a lot of sense. The governor stated the other day that there's going to be enough vaccines for every person in the state within five to six weeks. So it shouldn't be difficult for anybody to get the vaccine by May or the end of May, regardless of their age or their work status. So I'm not persuaded that this makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. I appreciate what you're saying. And I think with respect to this notion around, you know, the federal funds that are promised, I asked about, you know, the opportunity for what we might be able to do with those federal funds. And I, what was reported back to me is that in this person's 20-year career, they've never seen any of those federal funds ever actually make its way to the city. So I don't feel like we can depend on something that may come. In addition, you know, vaccines were promised and not delivered, and the supply has been extraordinarily short. And history is, you know, full of instances where legal threats were used to dissuade communities and leaders from doing the right thing. And I, again, I would really encourage us to think about just continuing the process to see, you know, what we can come back with and do some additional learnings so as to continue the conversation and we can make a decision later. But to not do anything now, I think, would eliminate, I think, an important opportunity for us to, again, help those who have been helping us.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll just say that for the reasons I stated earlier, I would, the fourth option of not doing anything at this time is what I'm most comfortable with.
All right. So, Councilmember Rec, you had mentioned before that you might be in support of trying to see what we can do. What are your thoughts at this point?
Yeah, I mean, my opinion hasn't changed. I think it's something we should still consider doing. But I don't think there's enough votes to do it. So I think that's sort of where we're, you know, I'm just sort of reading the room on where this is. And I think it's unfortunate because I think it's something we should look at. I mean, we're going to later today, look at supporting businesses and giving them public dollars for things. So I guess that's sort of maybe looked at differently versus trying to support the workers that are in those businesses. So hopefully those dollars that we decide to give to some of the other businesses will keep payroll going and allow those restaurants to stay open and support those employees.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Rec. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, I just want to react to that just a bit. And yeah, you know, this is a very, very challenging time and lots of people have a lot of needs. And I'm very supportive of using public money in ways that we feel can benefit the community. And I also think in anyone's 20-year career, they haven't seen a $1.9 trillion aid package. And I have seen real estimates of real dollars that will likely come to San Carlos. So I am enthusiastic about applying those dollars to the people who need it most. And I have no doubt frontline workers will be on that list. But I do draw a distinction between us as a community helping people and us as a city council mandating five or six employers in town to do something that, you know, we're not willing to put public dollars behind. I do draw a distinction there.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. All right. Well, it looks like we'll need...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor McDowell?
I just, Ron mentioned something earlier in the meeting that kind of caught my eye. And he, in his, you know, as he was brainstorming about things that we could potentially do, I appreciated his idea to pass or to adopt some kind of a resolution, really encouraging or stressing the importance of our essential workers. And, you know, I would welcome an effort to, you know, distribute that and, you know, let these employers know that we are keeping our eye on this and that we do support these workers. Like I said, Trader Joe's and Lucky are already doing this. But, you know, I would, you know, certainly support making that public message coming from our city council. But like I said, Daily City is getting sued right now, and they are going to spend money on council for that. And we don't have the budget that Daily City does. So if the county comes up with, you know, a way forward, I would be happy to revisit that. But I just, I have great pause about opening ourselves up to lawsuits when our budget is already very small. Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you, everyone. All right. So it was suggested to me that we move back very quickly to the COVID update from staff and revisit Councilmember Dugan's suggestion around note-taking. Apparently, there was not a formal action taken with respect to taking notes at the county and having those distributed by city clerk. So, Councilmember Dugan, if you want to propose your suggestion and for discussion again?
Sure, yeah. And I, you know, still being somewhat new to council, I wasn't really aware of how this was put in place or the motives behind it. So if there's more to it than I'm seeing, please let me know. But I know personally, I'm relying upon the official reports from the city that we receive in these meetings and the official reports we get from the county every two weeks. Based on that, I feel rather informed. So I just don't like, you know, asking my fellow council members to be taking notes for me. If I want to attend that meeting, I certainly can. But if others find value in it, I'm certainly, you know, I've taken notes in it before. I think I'm due the next time. Happy to do it. I just want to make sure we're, you know, still thinking that's an important activity.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank John for bringing this up. I hadn't thought about it, about not doing it. And I'm happy to continue to do it if the council feels that way. But I will tell you this, when I'm sitting, you know, watching those meetings and it's my turn to take notes, I'm trying to be very thorough, but I'm not. And I miss stuff. I'm writing down stuff that I've heard and then I'm missing the next sentence or the next concept. And I'm going back and trying to remember what it was. And so my notes are probably capturing probably 60% to 70% of what's said. And there's some important stuff that's said that I know I've missed. And I don't feel good about that. But John's right. We do have better sources of the information. The county, I believe, puts out a report of the meeting. And we also get an update from the city. So, you know, I'm happy to do it either way, but I wouldn't mind, it wouldn't bother me if we didn't continue it and got our information from the county. Because I don't, maybe everybody's more accurate than I am. But sometimes I just want to sit and listen and I don't want to take notes. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Rec?
Oh, I'm muted already. So I would just say, as someone who is now has a standing meeting on Wednesday, so I never get to have to take notes. I don't want to voice my opinion too much on this. But I will say, I think, John, to your point, when we started this last year in March, it was, I think, the meetings were weekly or it was sort of a lot more rapid pace. We weren't getting the updates from the county, and this was sort of the source to get the information. But that's changed a lot, too. So I think, you know, I'm open either way. And again, like I said, I'm not able to attend those meetings and take notes because I've got a standing Wednesday meeting at that time for work. So I'm fine either way. And I think we can get our resources and our information from the county, from the city, from other places. So certainly fine with me.
All right. The eyes have it, it sounds like. But Vice Mayor McDowell, do you have any comments?
I was just going to say I'm fine if we give it up. I usually listen in myself. So it's fine with me.
All right. There you go. That'll save everybody a little bit of time. All right. So the next item is consider, consideration of adopting a resolution setting a public hearing for May 24, 2021, to consider a three-year rate plan for residential and commercial solid waste rates, including unscheduled services pursuant to Proposition 218.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
It is Stephen Machida. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor. City Councilmember Stephen Machida, Pub Works Director. So as the mayor indicated, decided before you, is really to review and discuss the solid rates and, if appropriate, adopt a resolution setting the public hearing on May 24, 2021. Tonight, I have Alex Handlers from Earl Wells Associates to present and guide you through the process. So I'll turn this over to Alex.
Great. Thank you. And can folks hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you, Alex.
Okay, great. So I've got, hopefully, a pretty quick presentation about the solid waste rates and needs for additional funding and some rate options that I was going to walk through. And then there's some options for council consideration towards the end. And how do I change the slides on this? Or am I?
Yes, I see that you are controlling the screen. So if you just click on your arrow keys on your keyboard, that should progress it.
Oh, there we go. Oh, thank you. Yeah, I was surprised to see it up there. Okay, so for the presentation, again, just a little background on your solid waste enterprise and rates and finances. Talk about a few rate scenarios and where to go from here. And the goal of tonight, the council's not taking any final action on rates, but we were hoping to get input and direction on what rate scenario to include in the Prop 218 noticing process and get direction for moving forward with the process, the 218 process for adopting rate increases. Okay, background, the city provides solid waste and green waste and recycling services to all the homes and businesses in the city. You're one of 11 members of the South Bay Waste Management Authority, and they are the regional group that kind of acts on the collective interest of all the member agencies in negotiating and managing your franchise agreement with Recology, as well as the contract with the Shoreway Environmental Center for Operations. Recology is the local provider. They do the collecting, the hauling, the disposing. And the city also contracts with Recology for billing and bill collection. And in San Carlos, customers are billed quarterly for solid waste service. In terms of the finances, your solid waste utility is an enterprise fund. That means it pays for itself. It doesn't rely on any taxes from the city. Instead, it relies on service charges from the customers to pay for all the costs of service. So that means over time, your rates have got to be aligned with the cost of service in order to, so that you can pay for everything. So historically, I think the city's done a very good job with its rate management. You've implemented increases in eight of the last 12 years. There were a few years there where there was no rate increases. Historically, the city would adjust rates annually, kind of based on schedules provided by South Bay Waste Management Authority. But last time, you did a three-year rate increase. And that's similar to what you've been doing on the sewer side also with kind of multi-year rate increases. So you don't have to go through the same process every single year. The other side thing I wanted to mention about your rates is you're one of the few agencies that have addressed the cost of service rate alignment issues that historically have been put forth all the cities by South Bay Waste Management Authority. And that just means you've made some little tweaks and adjustments to your rates, whether it's to the cart sizes or residential versus commercial rates over years to try to make sure that everyone's paying their fair share of costs. And the final thing is, you know, your rates are currently, you're in the middle range compared to other member agencies. And before I show you a rate survey, I just want to show you a couple of quick things. One, on the left, is a breakdown of single-family accounts by residential cart sizes. Now, everyone is served with the same recycling cart and the same green waste. The only difference really is the solid waste cart. Most folks are that green section on the pie chart. They're the 32-gallon chart. And that's almost 60% of your customers are at that 32-gallon. You do have a sizable number of customers, 24%, who have been able to reduce their solid waste disposal. So they, well, they have 20-gallon carts. And with that comes a rate reduction. They pay rates that are about a third less than the 32-gallon cart. And you also have about 16% of your customers at 64 gallons. And very few customers, only about 167 in the entire city, that get the largest 96-gallon cart size. So overall, 82% of your customers are at one of the two smallest cart sizes. And then the slide on the right, or the chart on the right, shows a breakdown of where the revenues are coming from. The single-family revenues are in the purple. Your commercial are in the red on the left and on the bottom. I just broke out multifamily separately. Technically, multifamily or residential, but for service purposes, they're considered commercial. Next up, rate survey. Every agency wants to see how their rates compare to, you know, other regional agencies. So we have rates from 2020 that were provided by South Bay Waste Management Authority. And this first chart shows how your folks with the 20-gallon carts, how their rates, monthly rates, compared to other agencies out there. Again, the bills are quarterly, but the monthly rate in San Carlos for the 20-gallon carts is $25.87. You can see you're in the middle range. This next chart shows the 32-gallon cart sizes, which is most of your customers. Again, you're in the middle range, that middle grouping. And here is for the 64-gallon cart. Again, this is for about 16% of the accounts. Again, you're in the middle range. And you can see the cities that everyone kind of moves around on these charts a little bit because everyone has a slightly different rate structure. But in the big picture, your rates are kind of right in that middle range for all the different residential customers. But why we're here today is not just to present you the background information, it's to talk about rate increases. And this slide summarizes why rates need to increase in future years. Your solid waste enterprise is facing a lot of different cost increases. In general, the costs tend to go up every year, just... In general, the costs tend to go up every year, just even as part of the contract, you'd need inflationary cost increases every year. But there is more than that that's happening, uh, these current days. The first are a couple of, um, first couple of things on the list are, are two types of cost increases that are already built into South Bay Waste Management Authority's twenty twenty-one budget. And those include the, you know, the contractual cost increases with Recology. And, uh, not everyone was on the council last time we were here, but, um, the cost for Ox Mountain landfill have also gone up that we talked about last time. So those are in the budget as well. So those are two cost increases already embedded in, in what SBA, with Solid Waste Management Authority is already, uh, included in their budget. There's also a no, a number of other items that haven't yet been baked into their financial projections. And for a lot of these, I had a number of conversations with staff from South Bay Waste Management Authority. So they're the ones who informed me of all of this, and they provided me as much information as they could. And we developed what we thought were some very reasonable cost projections for these various items. I'm just briefly gonna cover them. There's a number of them. Um, there'll be plenty of time for questions after. But the first is, uh, the SB thirteen eighty-three organic waste compliance. So this is just a bill that was adopted a few years back and is gonna require all agencies in California to reduce their organic waste disposal and increase organic waste and food waste recycling. So there's some costs associated with that. The next item is additional bulky item pickup collection. This is something that's happening. There's been a need across all of South Bay Waste Management Authority's service area. The costs are estimated about eight hundred thousand a year. San Carlos would be paying a portion of that. And to put it in perspective, San Carlos, uh, this year, uh, is projected to fund about eight point four percent of the total costs that are funded by South Bay Waste Management Authority. Next up is the Shoreway Environmental Center. Now that's operated, um, by an agency called South Bay Recycling. And they've indicated that their current contract is not adequate enough. It's below the cost of service. So there's gonna need to be some, or very likely will be some cost increases when that contract comes up in a couple of years, when it comes up for renewal. Um, on top of that, there are new Bay Area Air Quality Management District regulations. There's something called Regulation thirteen, Rule two regarding methane emissions. And I won't go into detail. I, I'm not even the most familiar with this, all the details of this. But pretty much it's gonna require, uh, South Bay Waste Management Authority to take some additional actions to reduce methane emissions, potentially at the transfer station and potentially with conveyance as well. So this could be expensive. We built in what we think is a reasonable level of cost for this at five hundred thousand a year, um, in future years. And that's for all of South Bay Waste Management Authority. Again, San Carlos is about eight point four percent. Uh, next up, there's, uh, other contracts expiring. The construction and demolition materials disposal contract expires at the end of twenty twenty-two. Higher costs are anticipated. Green waste disposal, there are two, um, disposal contractors that work with South Bay Waste Management Authority. One of them has already increased its cost and that's included in the budget. But the second one has a contract that's up for renegotiation in a couple of years. And there's very strong, uh, anticipation that there'll be some cost increases there as well. And a couple of other things are Town of Atherton has withdrawn from the South Bay Waste Management Authority. There used to be twelve agencies, now there's eleven, although they were one of the smaller agencies in the, the group. Um, and they, most of their costs for funding, their own costs for hauling and disposal, there are some shared costs that are getting picked up from the rest of the member agencies. And finally, um, I already mentioned, you know, one of the main ones is the contractually authorized annual cost escalation. But we've projected that that's not gonna just be this year, like it's included in the budget for South Bay Waste Management Authority. But, you know, there's gonna be continued three percent cost escalation is what we factored in. So what we try to do is, you know, develop a reasonable, um, slightly conservative projections for future years with a goal of evaluating where do rates need to go to fund your future cost of service. Now, obviously, based on everything I just went over there, um, bottom line is that there will need to be some rate increases to, you know, pay for the cost of service. Uh, but we came up with, uh, some various scenarios that I'm about to discuss in the next slide. And the scenario is kind of expanded after the initial recommendations. So there are a number of scenarios and a couple of key things I wanted to point out was there's no single right way of raising rates to get from here to there in terms of covering the costs. There's a number of ways of getting there. However, those different, uh, options have implications for, you know, how much, how long is it gonna be before you start balancing your budget? How long is it gonna be that you're gonna continue to be drawing down fund reserves until rates eventually get to levels where they support balanced budgets? So at the bottom of this slide, I list a few key principles. And one is, uh, you know, rates are not a now or never game. It's either kind of a more or later game. So the more you do in the near term, the less rate increase you'll need in future years and vice versa. The less you do in the near term, the more they'll need to be in future years. And you'll see that in the scenarios. The second thing I just mentioned with, you know, lower rate increases in the near term, uh, is gonna, gonna result in, you know, continued budget deficits and drawdown of limited fund reserves to, to lower levels until rates get raised up to where they need to support all the costs. And the third point is that, you know, regardless of which rate scenario the city ultimately goes for, the customers are gonna end up paying the same over the longer term. Um, because if you did less now, you'd have to do more later. Over time, the rates are gonna have to reflect the cost of service. So it's really, uh, you're not saving customers anything in the long run by doing less rate increases now. You're just kind of transitioning when they're gonna be paying these costs. So with that thought, we'll move on to this next slide here. It summarizes the various rate scenarios that were, uh, in the staff report and the draft report that we've put together, the staff report provided by the city. The first scenario, rate increase scenario A, that was kind of our preliminary recommendation, was for three, six percent rate increases over the next three years. Now, of course, we're already in the middle or the beginning of year twenty twenty-one. And due to Recology's billing cycle and the Prop two eighteen process, the soonest that first rate increase could become effective would be August first of this year. So we've kind of already deferred rates for half a year regardless of what these alternatives are. But we initially recommended, you know, six, six, six percent rate increases. And then the city said, hey, you know, we'd like to look at some other scenarios. Can we get by with something less this year? So one scenario is scenario B. That's if we cut the first year rate increase in half to three percent for, for twenty twenty-one. And as I mentioned, that results in the need for a little bit higher rate increases over the next two years of seven and a half percent. Um, the third scenario is what if we did no rate increase this year? So still to get to the same place over three years, you'd need still yet a little more rate increases in years of twenty-two and twenty-three. And those first three scenarios, I'll point out, they all get to pretty much the same place after three years. But in addition to this, we understand that it's, you know, due to COVID and other factors that many agencies are, you know, trying to do everything they can to reduce or defer any type of rate increases. Not all of them, but, but some agencies I work with. So, uh, you know, we came up with some, what I call defer scenarios with additional rate deferral. There are lower rate increases over the first three years. But keep in mind, they would likely, uh, result in the need for slightly higher rate increases after three years. You know, just a couple of percent more, for example, in year four or year five. Um, so those scenarios, you can see here, scenario D is kind of a parallel of scenario B, but the rates instead of being three percent, seven and a half percent, seven and a half percent in scenario B, here it's reduced a little bit to two percent this year with two seven percent rate increases. Likewise, scenario E builds off within the top part of this is scenario C. Um, instead of having no rate increases with two nine percents, there'd be no rate increase this year with two eight percent. So just, you know, trying to squeeze every, uh, percentage rate reduction possible. The next slide shows what the rates themselves would look like. And I'm just showing in this slide because there'd be a huge matrix of rates. This is just showing the rates for the thirty-two gallon cart size, which again is what almost sixty percent of the customers have. And you can see, uh, with scenario A, the rates go from, you know, a little less than thirty-nine dollars up to about forty-six dollars. So it's a little over seven dollar increase spread over three years. Um, and for all three of the first scenarios, it's pretty much the same level of rate increase over three years. They all get to about forty-six dollars. It just, you know, how quickly do we get there? So there's not really a huge difference between those. And then the other two scenarios, you know, we, again, we try to squeeze the rate increases down as low as possible while still maintaining bare bones minimum level of fund reserves. And even then, the rate increases translate to about forty-five dollars per month for that thirty-two gallon cart size over three years. So it's only about a dollar less over three years than the, the initial three rate scenarios in the blue on the top. So we're kind of, you know, not quite splitting hairs, but wanted to show you the, kind of the full range of possibilities. And as I mentioned, the, the ramifications of lower rate increases in the near term are that, you know, your rates won't be fully funding the cost of service until the rates get phased in. So that means you're gonna have some budget deficits, um, until the rates get to adequate levels. So currently, the city has about a million dollars in fund reserves that are held by Recology on the city's behalf. And no matter what the scenario is, you're gonna be reducing those fund reserves a little bit this year because the rate increase is only gonna be in effect for part of the year, if any rate increase goes into effect. So this chart just shows kind of the end of the year fund reserves under each of the scenarios. And again, these are projections based on, you know, we try to build in all the, you know, reasonable assumptions. And under the preliminary recommendation for the three, six percent rate increases, kind of the goal there is to make sure at the end of three years, your, your rates are supporting the cost of service and your fund reserves are gonna be, uh, maintained at roughly ten percent of projected annual expenses. I'm just gonna sidetrack for one second here. Ten percent of annual expenses is not a big reserve fund for a utility enterprise. Often when the agencies look at water and sewer enterprises, they try to keep, you know, at least, you know, twenty-five to fifty percent of funds in reserve for those types of utilities, as well as reserves for emergency capital reserves and things. But for whatever reason, on the solid waste side, I think it's because there's contract operators. Typically, a lot of agencies don't focus on maintaining fund reserves like they do for water and sewer. So the fund reserves tend to be a bit lower. So anyway, so you can see scenario A keeps you at that, about that ten percent of projected annual expenses in your reserves after three years. And you can see what the other scenarios do with the, um, fund reserves getting the lowest, obviously, in scenario E, which has no rate increase this year, coupled with, uh, the additional eight percents. So there the rate, the fund reserves get down to a little over, you know, between two hundred, three hundred thousand per year. No, that's not zero, which is good, but it's, um, it's not bad, but it's not good because that doesn't even cover five percent of, uh, annual expenses. So that would be fund reserves getting down to pretty minimal levels. So again, let me just go back. These are the, one quick, uh, refresh review of these different rate scenarios. Sorry for having too many of them, but just the scenarios kept, kept adding in as, uh, I think there was some foresight, uh, that, you know, council's gonna wanna see what are the options for keeping the rates as low as possible. But if they get too low, again, you, you get yourself in a, uh, riskier situation with the fund reserves get close to being depleted. The, kind of the final thing I wanted to cover, be talking, be talking about the process is that in addition to the rates, um, the city does offer a rate reduction program. Not every city offers this. Since two thousand and fifteen, you've had a solid waste rate reduction, offer solid waste bills. Homeowners in the city are eligible. It's based on annual household income. The city doesn't typically get involved in the whole income verification process, but instead relies on customers to get verified and participate in a similar program that's offered by PG&E, the care program. And they actually also have a new program called their, uh, I think the FERA program, which applies to larger families. So anyone who's enrolled in one of those programs automatically is eligible for the city's rate reduction program. On this slide, I included some information on PG&E, PG&E's program where people can get more information. You may have some folks in the city who are eligible for PG&E's care program but haven't signed up. So, uh, the strong recommendation from the city and is to please go check with PG&E because you may be eligible not only for solid waste rate increases, but also for their electricity rate increases. And then we also included some information, uh, where folks can get more info on the city's program. That's, it's easy to find on the city's website, or they can call the city, get the number shown here, or they can just call the city's frontline and then get directed to where they can get more information. This rate reduction program that the city offers is not subsidized by other rate payers. I'll just point out, this is being funded by the city's general fund. And that's why I, I don't think every agency out there has these low income, these economic, uh, programs. Um, and on top of this, folks are encouraged to, you know, look into the PG&E, PG&E care program eligibility and the city's eligibility because it's ten percent, not only for the solid waste, but city also has a, a similar program that was implemented a few years ago for sewer rates. So see folks get a ten percent reduction on sewer rates as well. So the, the next steps, uh, we were hoping to get council direction tonight on what level of solid waste rate increases to include in the Prop two eighteen notices that need to get sent out to everybody as part of the rate increase process. And the thing I'll point out there is the Prop two eighteen notice includes the maximum rate increases that the city would be able to adopt at its Prop two eighteen hearing when they, when you go through that. So at the two eighteen hearing, you can always implement rates that are lower than that's, those levels included in the notice, but you can't do anything higher. Um, so in addition to that, I, I think staff is looking for direction for moving forward with the process. And just to summarize the process, uh, you have to mail notice of the proposed rate increases to all the affected property owners at least forty-five days before the date of the public hearing. And the notice informs them not only of the proposed increases, but of, you know, the date, time and place of a public hearing and how folks can submit written protests. When you hold your public hearing, and the target date for that is May twenty-fourth, um, the rate increases are subject to something called majority protest. And what that means is if written protests are submitted by more than fifty percent of all the affected property owners, then the city would not be allowed to proceed with the rate increase process. However, these are rare, but these occur. And assuming no majority protests occurred, the city would be able to adopt rates up to the maximum levels included in the notice. So that concludes, uh, what I was gonna cover. And I'll turn it back to city for questions or discussion.
Great, thank you, Alex, and thank you, Stephen. Um, so we'll, um, go to questions from council, public comments, uh, come back to council comment discussion, um, before we entertain any kind of emotion. So, uh, with that, I believe, um, Councilmember Collins, uh, you had your hand up first. Then we'll, uh, start with you and go to Councilmember Dugan and then Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I really only have really one question for Alex. But before I ask the question, I gotta tell you that I always look forward to the discussion of garbage rates. It's, you know, it's It's, you know, it's one of the highlights of my life. So with that bit of sarcasm.
Ron, you're not getting on the SBWMA board, I'm not giving it up.
Darn. So Alex, I was wondering if you could go back to slide eleven for a minute? It's the one where we talk about rate scenarios.
Yes.
So I noticed in A, B, and C, all of those add up to, if I, if my math is right, they all add up to eighteen percent. But if, let's say we just do a scenario three, or C rather, I'm sorry. Isn't there some sort of inflationary effect that comes in, comes into play here? I mean, the costs go up and if we're not raising, if we're not collecting the money in that first year, why are we still only going to nine percent in each of the following years? So something I base, I think there's some basic mis, non-understanding I have of this.
No, it's a good question. And in all the scenarios, they're supporting the cost of service and the cost of service themselves include that cost escalation over three years. So you're right in pointing out that you would get less revenues over the three-year period with scenario C because you're getting no increase the first year. The next year, you'd be at nine percent, whereas scenario A is you'd be at six and six would be twelve. And only till the third year would you get kind of on parity where you'd be up, you know, roughly eighteen percent over the three years. So that's why I was maybe talking too much about the fund reserves. What that means is your, your revenues are going to be a little bit lower compared to scenario A in year one and then year two, and then finally you catch up in year three. So where does that come from? But we didn't increase rates more to account for that. We saw that as coming out of the fund reserves, that your fund reserves would get depleted a little bit more under scenarios B and then even more under scenario C compared to scenario A. So you end up with less fund reserves over the three-year period.
Okay, so then when you look at D and E, you're talking about sixteen percent totals, which, again, it's sort of counterintuitive. You end up with less rate increases for even smaller initial rate increases. What, what am I missing here?
Well, part of that same concept applies and just to, to mention the reason for these additional rate increases was to, just because there's a lot of agents, some agencies out there are looking, you know, anything they can do to, you know, reduce a rate increase due to COVID, et cetera, in these times. So we wanted to show, you know, what if you really try to minimize the rate increases? One thing you'll notice, it's not a huge difference from the rate, the increases on the top. You're right, you add them up at sixteen percent. And again, the same thing applies. Two things about these, these green scenarios, D and E. One is you'd get even less revenues each year with these. So they would result in a little bit bigger deficits each year. So your fund reserves would decline even more. And I, I call these scenarios with additional rate deferral. So really, the, the rate decrease is only temporary in these scenarios because you, they would leave you needing more rate increases in year four, possibly in year five. So you'd kind of have to catch up in the future years based on the projections to, you know, eventually balance the budgets. So it's the same, you're picking up the, the same concept. You're getting less revenues with less rate increases in the near term. But we didn't try to make that up by, you know, ramping up the rate increases more. It's being made up by having the fund reserves drop a little bit more instead with the thoughts that you, you know, continue to manage your fund reserves with future year rate increases. Kind of what you're facing now is a little, normally the only increases you face are things like these inflationary increases from your, your contract with Recology. And then maybe sometime there's like, you know, Ox Mountain contract or something that comes up. But there's a number of different things that happen to be hitting solid waste enterprise in the short term, over the next few years. So that's why the rate increases need to be a little bit more than they have in the past. Not a ton more, we're not, we're not talking about twenty percent rate increases every year.
Right.
It is a little bit elevated level of funding needs that it's ramping up over three years.
And I noticed you did have an asterisk there that said that, you know, if, if this chart had two or three more columns, we would see some significant rate increases after the three years. So it's sort of like pay me now or pay me later, seems like.
I, I want to say the sort of good news is after these three years are over, there's, the, the level of rate increases is more inflationary, you know, like, you know, protecting three, four percent. Maybe with the, the green reduced rate scenarios, maybe you need, you know, five percents for a couple of years instead of
Right.
four percents or three percents, but it's not a, you know, hu, it's kind of at the margins, but we just wanted to, you know, if you go to the two slides from here, it shows the, the fund reserves, you know, at the end of each year. And there's where you can see the impact of having, you know, the less rate increases or no rate increases in the near term, which just results in, in less fund reserves over the next three years. And again, at the bottom of the slide, just for comparative purposes, I, I showed what, you know, what's ten percent, five percent projected annual expenses. There are some agencies that skirt by each year right on the cusp with zero fund reserves, but it's not something we typically would recommend as being part of prudent financial management for any utility enterprise. So it's good to keep a little something there because there's always something unknown happening like, you know, Afficon pulling out or, you know, some contract coming up for renewal or some new regulation that's going to impact the costs.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Your enthusiasm for the topic is matched by the number of questions you asked this evening, so duly noted. Councilmember Dugan.
Yes, thank you. Alex, just, uh, you know, this is my first cycle through this. I just want to get the lay of the land. So you work for us, right, San Carlos?
Correct.
So we honored you and this is not a rate negotiation. This is you just telling us new expenses that are going to be passed through Recology to San Carlos, whether we like it or not.
Yeah, tha- that's correct. I mean, the, the costs are established by the contract and, you know, other things that South Bay Waste Management faces. So, you know, we're representing you, we're just trying to show you based on the information that we're getting and, you know, current year budget that they have to fund, as well as all the financial challenges they're facing. You know, what likely is San Carlos need to do to its rates to keep its rates in line with the cost of service and keep your rates from, you know, going into deficit mode where, I don't know what you do in that mode. Maybe Recology can cover you a little bit, but, you know, it could. An agency that didn't raise its rates for many years probably would end up having to re, it probably require the general funds chip in.
But then how does this work? You know, when, so there's like a master contract, is that at the JPA level? And, you know, like at what year do rates get renegotiated where it's like an actual negotiation, not just a pass through?
I am going to defer to the city on that because I'm not, there was recently kind of a new contract amendment renewal process that, that one place went through.
Yeah, yes, that, you know, they're in the process of going through the kind of the reevaluation of the contract. So that, that should be coming up to council here pretty soon.
Oh, so whatever we do here might get kind of rejiggered as the, um, because the entire contract is, and that's between, the JPA is redoing the full contract?
That is correct.
Okay, and do we have any sen, you know, is that, do we have any sense how that works? I mean, Recology has a monopoly and, you know, it's going to be all the same? Or are we looking at other options besides Recology? We have some, you know, daylight there or like this is the lay of the land?
Yeah, in, in general, Recology is kind of the, the users that we, we have used in the past. I mean, I, you know, the option of going to somewhere else is probably very difficult, I think, just because the, the timing of it. But, you know, it, it is something that we could kind of investigate further.
Okay, I was just, I, I'm just trying to get a, a better sense of just how all this works. It's quite, quite a bit to it, that's for sure.
Councilmember Doug, you know, I, I was involved with the Sydney the last time we changed providers. And it's a multi-year process to change providers, very complicated. A lot of evaluation of, as I recall, you know, the equipment, the plants, the, you know, the level of service that each agency wants, a lot of different issues are involved.
I, I have no doubt it's complicated and hard, but don't tell Recology that, right?
So can I, can I just, I've been for just one second, unless if that's okay, Madam Mayor?
Please, Councilmember Rack.
Since I'm the board member for SBWMA.
Yes, I was hoping you would.
So John, I would just say, you know, we just renegotiated the contract with Ox Mountain for their disposal. And so that's part of the cost increases in that. And we looked at multiple locations and then we tried to balance the sort of environmental and economic aspects of it of not having to haul waste down to, you know, past South San Jose or other places. So some of those costs came into it. We are renegotiating, the contract will be up into, after twenty twenty-three. We're already in the process of doing an RFP for the contract providers that we subcontract with, so there may be some costs associated with that. And we also have some costs associated with legal requirements that have come in around from the state in terms of waste and diversion of waste that we're doing. And so there's the infrastructure costs. And I would also just add that we actually got a good deal on this one too, John, because we have the transfer center in San Carlos. We get a portion of the revenue that comes in. I think it's about two point two million dollars a year that the city benefits by being part of the JPA, part of the agreement with that, and having the transfer center in San Carlos that we use for other infrastructure projects throughout the community.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that, very, very informative. Glad, glad you're on that board, Adam. And then I guess my other question was just, so I heard, so, you know, we're basically deciding how much reserves we want to maintain, how frugal or conservative we want to be on that. And why is it that Recology holds our reserve? Wouldn't that be on our balance sheet? I mean, I don't know why we'd want a private company holding the reserves. Is that just, that was part of that JPA negotiation? Is that, Alex, do you have a?
Sure, they're the ones who are doing the billing and the collection. And a lot of the funds are, you know, they don't know what your balance is going to be. They're like truing stuff up from two years prior, so it's kind of like a rolling balance. But it is your money, it's for your city's benefit. And I don't know the details of the contract, but if the city ever wanted to take it back, they, they probably could. But it's usually not, you know, it's not tens of billions of dollars. It's, you know, most around a million dollars.
I see. And, and who exactly keeps them honest? Are they, they're audited every year and, you know, and, and these cost pass-throughs are audited? And everything's kind of transparent?
Yes, South Bay Waste Management Authority, they help, you know, represent all the groups negotiating the contracts. And they've got a process of, you know, reviewing and verifying everything every year. So they're kind of acting in the city's best interest at all the member agencies to make sure that the, everything's justified.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate that.
All right, all right, I don't see any additional questions. And thank you for your very cogent and clear explanations, Alex, to really complicated concepts. So I appreciate that. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make comment at this point?
There was one, there we go. Mike Kelly, looks like you should be able to unmute yourself at this time.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor Palmer Lohan and, and council members. I'm Mike Kelly, I'm the general manager at Recology San Mateo County. And one thing I did want to clear up, talking about Councilmember, Member Dugan's question. The hauling contract with Recology was actually renegotiated recently at the end, well, in two thousand seventeen. And most contracts with all the member agencies were signed in two thousand and eighteen. So we have a fifteen-year hauling contract. And again, that was negotiated by the SBWMA and they had consultants come in and review our numbers. So that, that hauling piece has been negotiated and that's set for fifteen more years, starting this year, January twenty twenty-one. The piece that's going out to bid is the operation of the transfer station. That's a completely separate company that BMW, I think, talked about. That's a, the processing company, processing services provided by SBR, South Bay Recycling. So they do the processing, they process the, the recycling material. They process the organics and pro, and transport it to the organics processing center. And they process the MSW, which you would call garbage, and bring that to the Ox Mountain landfill. So that's the, the secondary piece of the operation. And again, that's, that's operated by SBR and that is the piece that'll be going out to bid in twenty twenty. Well, it ends in twenty twenty-three, it'll be going out to bid sooner than that. And I just wanted to make that clarif, clarifying comment, that's all.
Thank you, Mike. All right, Crystal, any additional members of?
No, there are no others.
Okay, so why don't we move then to council comment and discussion? All right, why don't we start with Councilmember Rack and then we'll go to Councilmember Dugan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I appreciate the presentation and, and I think from my view, I, I would prefer from a rate increase to kind of keep it more smooth. And I, I think the initial six, six, six percent is a sort of a better approach because I, I noticed that's the only one where the reserves are essentially ma, maintained after year three. And just knowing that, you know, we can't really predict, you know, as things happen, I think it's safe to have a sort of a healthy reserve on that and keep it closer to ten percent. So that, that's just sort of my, that's my thoughts around this.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, my, my comments were, and I, and I appreciate that. I, I guess I would just say, you know, this is a year we're looking to help folks. There's good reason for that. And we do have a reserve there and we certainly have other reserves as a city. So I, I don't think we need to be overly conservative here in twenty twenty-one. So I would go for, you know, I could get behind zero nine nine. I even think zero eight eight is reasonable in the sense that I don't think we have to wait three years to revisit this. We could go zero this year and agree on zero eight eight. And then in two years, if everything's great, we can open it back up. And it also sounds like this is a, a bit of a inflection point. So on the other side of whatever we do here, I heard would be to three and four. So like, you know, I would rather see us go zero eight eight five, you know, than, than do a six percent increase this year. And I think we'd end up in roughly the same spot. So anyway, that's just my, my thought on.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I absolutely want to talk about what options we have to pick, but I'm just looking at our, you know, what this item is. And my question for Greg is, are we not just setting the hearing tonight? Are we, are we deciding generally which direction we're going to go? It's, it's not clear from the, from the motion.
Yeah, the, what you're deciding tonight is what will be contained in the notice, the forty-five day notice that goes out to the community before the next, before the public hearing, when the protests can be heard. And you, so you're basically setting the maximum amount that you'll be able to charge when you send out the notice, not the minimum.
Yeah. But so Greg, what you're saying is that we need to, we need to have, put something in the notice. In other words, we have to say basically what our intention is, correct?
That's right.
Okay, all right, all right, well, good. And, and given that, and I, I, you know, I'm glad that Adam spoke first because he's our representative on the board and he's more involved in all of this than the rest of us. And somehow I've successfully avoided that responsibility for nine years. So my hat's off to Adam for that. But I tend to agree with Adam. I think that, you know, past experience has proved, has shown actually that when we even out the rate increases, we are in a much better position down the road. They're, they're very predictable, you know. We know that we're going to get a particular revenue stream. I would rather be And I would rather be in the position down the road to give some rate relief. And I think the first scenario puts us in that position. So generally, those are my sentiments on it.
Okay, thank you. Hang on. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I can see both sides here. But I think perhaps the most effective way to help those who need it most, who are, you know, have lost their income during the pandemic, or who are seniors on a very limited income, is to really plug them into the PG&E Cares Program where they can have a 10% discount. When I'm looking at the rate scenarios, it's really just a difference of a dollar or two. So I'm not really sure that that's going to be noticed by many. So I think that instead of having a kind of shocking rate increase from 0 to 8%, I, I think I prefer the smoothed-out approach, or I could compromise on B. But I think that the more certainty we give to customers and the less surprises, I, I think that, I think that that's helpful. And, you know, we're talking a difference of $1 to $2 in most of these cases.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. So my, my perspective here is that I, I acknowledge that the timing associated with these rate increases is not optimal, you know, when so many in our community are hurting. And I appreciate that we do have the PG&E program that people can opt into. And when I take a look at, I'm aligned with, you know, Councilmember Rack and Vice Mayor McDowell on this in terms of the rate increases are somewhat nominal on a monthly basis when we smooth them out at the 6% year-on-year. And I think Councilmember Collins spoke to that as well. My hope would be that, you know, perhaps, I don't know if it's possible and appropriate, but maybe with that notice, we could include some information. And maybe this is what Vice Mayor McDowell was getting at, is educating the community, just reminding them of these programs that are available if they need to, you know, get their rates lowered for one reason or another. It seems, I don't know if, Jeff, you can speak to that possibility or not?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll look into whether or not we can include that information as part of the 218 notice process. That I'm uncertain about. But regardless, we can definitely, you know, obviously, the 218 process isn't the trigger where folks would be getting the bill. So we could make sure that we provide that information robustly to the community before the bill, the, whatever the rates are that go into effect, go into effect, to make sure that we've got maximum exposure in the community for folks who need to, to take advantage of that important program that the council offers.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Well, it sounds, it sounds like we do have some alignment at least around option A. So unless I mishearing, so unless there's further discussion wanted.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but as I recall, wasn't, it was Matt Grocott that was the chief proponent of that rate reduction program? Am I not remembering that correctly? That was sort of his thing?
Honestly, it's been so many years, Ron, that the, that it's been into effect. I don't remember the exact catalyst.
I have a vague memory of it. But anyway, I, I give him credit for it, but I agree, we should probably promote that a little bit more. If, if we can do it in the notice, that would be great.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I firmly support getting notice out about that program. You know, I would advocate at least for a compromise of B. I just, I'm not sure, and I, I understand these are only a couple of dollars, but the, it, it matters, you know, what we signal as a city as far as are we thinking about this stuff? Are we just kind of running it through? And, and I, I just don't think being even more fiscally conservative is a, is just, this isn't the year for that. So I would, so I don't support doing a, the full raise this year. I just don't support that. But, but I understand, it's a couple of dollars. I get that.
All right. Well, I'd be willing to entertain a motion at this point.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-.
Twenty, 21.
21?
Yes.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, setting a public hearing for May 24, 2021, to consider a three-year rate plan for residential and commercial solid waste rates, including unscheduled services pursuant to Proposition 218.
Second.
All right. And, and just a quick procedural question, I think, going back to Councilmember Collins' question earlier. So, so in that motion, we didn't call out the preferred rate, but I, I heard that, at least it sounded like we had alignment around option A. So Greg, I don't know what procedurally we need to do at this point.
Oh, do I need to, yeah, do I need to?
I was just going to clarify that, that the motion should have the rate structure, your, your, sorry, your preferred rate structure.
Let me, let me do that to add the rate structure. Do I need to say the whole thing over again?
No, just, just clarify that.
Clarify that intend for the rate structure of an annual increase of 6% for the next, for each of the three years. And to, for the staff to, I guess, to look at promoting the residential, the reduction plan as well.
My second still stands.
Yeah, all right. Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Okay. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
No.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes. All right. I might suggest that we, we take a quick 10-minute break if everyone's open to that. All right. And then do we want to make a motion to extend the meeting now or just wait till we come back? We still have a few, a couple more items, so I'm just not sure. We want to wait till?
Do it now so we don't forget?
Okay.
That's the case. I move to extend the meeting till 11:15.
All seven.
All right.
Okay.
Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes. All right, so we'll meet back here at 10:07. Thank you, everyone.
Madam Mayor, I believe you're on mute.
Of course, of course I am. All right. So consideration of accepting the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2020 and direct staff to submit report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. This is item 10B under new business.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Lisa Porras, Planning Manager. Tonight, I will be providing a brief presentation on the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for the year 2020. And I am just waiting to see. There we go. The 2020 Housing Element Annual Progress Report covers the period of January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2020. The state requires that all cities and counties report on the following nine items. Out of these nine, what tends to be of most interest is the number of building permits issued to construct new units. This is because these are the units that track the progress of meeting the regional housing needs allocation or the RENA. So jumping right into housing applications and building permit activity for the 2020 calendar year, 87 units applied to receive a planning or a building permit. 62 units were approved or received a planning entitlement. 66 units received building permits. And we're very happy to report that of these, 23 were for very low-income units. And out of the 66 units, 52 were net new units that were added to the San Carlos housing supply that count towards the current RENA. As a reminder, the RENA for the current housing element cycle is 195 units of very low-income units, 107 low, 111 moderate, and 183 above moderate, for a total of 596 units. And again, just as a reminder, the requirement from the state in terms of the RENA is to really make sure that cities and counties are planning for these number of net new units within their local jurisdictions. That not, it's not that we are required to build them, but we need to make sure that our local plans and policies and our zoning ordinance do not constrain development should a developer come, want to come and propose housing within our community. So again, it's just making sure that we plan for these units appropriately. So how are we doing? Well, in 2020, we issued, the city issued permits to construct 17 net new below-market-rate units in the very low-income category, and then 35 units in the above-moderate or market-rate category. So at a total of 575 units to date, San Carlos has certainly seen an increase in its overall housing supply, and is just 21 units away from reaching the overall 596 RENA target. However, increasing the number of affordable housing units by 413 has been more difficult to achieve, with 49 units added to date, leaving 364 remaining. San Carlos has two more years to go to complete the current housing element cycle, which is currently for the year 2015 to 2023. The Annual Progress Report also includes a status update on program implementation. The Housing Element has 45 actions or programs that center around seven mandated topic areas. And many of these are ongoing or completed. But some of the key program implementations that were accomplished last year was an update to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and then also kickstarting an update to our below-market-rate housing ordinance, as well as the housing element for the next cycle. As the council is aware, San Carlos essentially had an early start towards updating its housing element for the next eight-year cycle or for the cycle between 2023 and 2031. What's been completed to date has, of course, been a first workshop last fall. And then earlier this year, we had our second workshop already. And where we're at now is working with the community to identify housing site criteria, essentially which criteria should be considered as we look at areas for new housing, what changes in land use may be necessary, and what some are some of the solutions that we're going to need to consider as we plan for a total of approximately 2,800 new units for the next housing element cycle. Currently, we're planning on our third workshop, which we're aiming to have in late April or early May this year. And then later in the summer, we should start to see some draft documents surface that we can start to circulate and review. And then later this year, we're going to start to initiate our conversations with the state so we can get some early coordination and some feedback on our housing element. As, and as a reminder, of course, our housing element is one of the elements that does need to be reviewed and certified by the state. So just a quick reminder, the Housing Element Update Effort does have its own project website, which is sancarlos2040.org. And then just within the last week, a new countywide website was just launched, and this is letstalkhousing.org. And essentially, what this county website is, is a location for all of the cities within San Mateo County and the county itself to serve as essentially a repository of the progress, outlining where they're at in the process, how people can get involved. And San Carlos is definitely part of that process. And you can find a link to our own project website within that countywide website. And as part of the county's efforts to kind of kick off the process, and again, San Carlos got off to an early start. But where the county is at, and in working with the 21 Elements Group, is they've just, again, recently launched a website, and they're starting the process by kicking off four workshop opportunities to discuss the importance of housing and why it matters. And first, for San Carlos, our date is April the 13th. And city staff will be available to meet with any participants that find themselves or wanting to come and, and participate in that county effort and find the San Carlos breakout room and talk to us about anything specific related to San Carlos. So we definitely want to have a presence there. And it's just an opportunity for us to, to let folks know that we have started our process, to let them know where we're at and how they can engage and be part of the process that's currently underway. So the recommendation for tonight is to direct staff to submit that Housing Element Annual Progress Support to the State Department of Housing and Community Development and a copy to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. This concludes my presentation. And both Adam Aronson and I are available to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. So we'll take council questions, public comment, and then back to council comment and discussion before entertaining any kind of motion. So it looks like Councilmember Rack has your hand up first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one quick question. Lisa, thank you for the presentation. The, the project at 817 Walnut is, where is that? Is that, did we issue the, is that counted in the permit? Because it's, we're already doing construction on that one. How does, where did that fit in in terms of those units, in terms of getting credit for building the below-market units there?
Yes, that's a good question and a good point of clarification. So that project consists of 24 units in total. 23 of those were below-market rate, and then one of those was a regular above-moderate unit. And so the way it works in terms of tracking our progress towards meeting the RENA is the number of net new units. So because that project had seven units, you know, not that project, the project that was there, or the development that was there before this project consisted of seven units, we have a total of 17 net new units for that project. Which, which did, which did receive building permits in 2020. So again, yes, what we get to count towards our RENA is when building permits are issued. There's been other projects that have been approved, but we only get to count them once the building permit has been issued.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack, Vice Mayor McDowell, and then we'll go to Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Lisa, for the great, great question. Could we flip back to slide five, please? I have two questions on that slide. It's the overall RENA progress to date chart.
Yes. My computer is a little slow.
There we go.
Whoops. Clicked one. Okay.
Okay. So in the 2020 very low column, those 17 units are 817 Walnut, which Adam was just talking about. And then I believe the column is supposed to be, it says 16, not 26, but that's 2016 column. I see there's a significant number of low and moderate units. Were those the Transit Village units?
Yes. So that particular year, you are correct, it's not 2026, it's 2016. There's a typo there. Those units, I don't have the detail of that report in front of me, because it was for 2016, but definitely the number of below-market-rate units that are reflected in this chart here do consist of the ones that were part of the Transit Village project.
Okay, I think that was twenty units. I was just trying to go back and look that up, but, so I'm just, I just want to note that the vast majority of our affordable housing below-market-rate units are public-private partnerships, they're not large private development projects coming through. And then you mentioned the five-ninety-six RENA number that we have to meet, and that total by year, we're at five-seventy-five, which on the surface kind of looks like we're close to meeting our RENA, but really, we have so much further to go with our moderate-low and very-low-income units. So do we, you know, if we were to reach five-ninety-six by adding more above-moderate, would, would, would you say that we've met our RENA goal, or that we didn't?
I would say that we didn't meet our RENA goal, because our RENA goal really does consist of the income categories listed here, the number of units that were assigned to San Carlos as very-low, at a hundred, at a hundred and ninety-five, and then a hundred and seven low, and then one hundred and eleven moderate. And of course, when you add all those numbers together, that's obviously a significant majority of the overall five hundred and ninety-six unit category. Now, again, what's worth mentioning, and it's not that we are required to build these units, because you know, as a city, our job is, you know, not to build the units, except, you know, we, we do partner with nonprofits, of course, but a lot of these units are really coming into our city as a response, you know, from developers. And then depending upon what developers are proposing, and what those look like, whether they trigger the below-market-rate ordinance, or there's some other type of project that's being proposed in the city, basically kind of work together to, to, to sort of, you know, you know, meet our RENA needs, and basically start to see where we might land in terms of those overall targets. Where we're not required to build, again, we're just required to make sure that our zoning development standards and our land use, our land use classifications allow for housing, should a developer want to come forth and build the housing.
Right, thank you very much.
But to answer your question, if we fulfilled all of our, our units in the above-moderate, then we're not really, you know, meeting, making progress and meeting the overall RENA target for the other income categories.
Okay. And then my final question, and you mentioned just now the BMR ordinance, and I noticed in one of the charts that it says the city will be updating the BMR ordinance in 2021. And I'm just wondering when you think that will be coming to council, because I know we're all anxious to kind of get our hands in that and, you know, see what we can do.
I'd like to let Adam answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're working on that right now. We actually hope to schedule a meeting with the Housing Subcommittee to talk to that next, hopefully sometime in April, if that works with everyone's schedules, but we hope to bring that very soon. The numbers are almost finalized in terms of the, the analysis.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, hi, Lisa. Thank you for the very good presentation and all your hard work and outreach on the Housing Element update-to-date. I know you've been working hard on it, and yeah, you know, I mean, it feels like we've made housing a priority for some time, so it's so disappointing to kind of see the scorecard and realize, you know, yeah, we've built some housing, but we're just not getting it done for the lower-income folks. That was an interesting distinction, though, you just made, that, you know, obviously, we're not builders, so we're not going to build this stuff. So, you know, we haven't achieved RENA, I doubt we're going to catch up to this in two years. But do you, do we pass mustard? You know, have we properly designated land use such that we, you know, have done our part to fulfill this number, and the building community just hasn't shown up yet? You know, have we, do, do, do we have to make that case as a city, and do we have a good case?
Well, I would say that we made the case when our housing element was adopted in 2015. So that, that when the housing element was adopted in 2015, that was the time when we needed to show that all of our zonings, and we did a vacant land inventory, and we had to list all of the sites, their APN, the potential number of units that could be accommodated on those sites if they were to turn over. So we had to do that for vacant land and also for underutilized land. And then the state evaluates those sites, they evaluate our zoning, they look at our housing programs and policies to see what we have in place. And then they make the determination that the city has satisfied all the state requirements, and based upon their vacant and underutilized land, along with the zoning, the city could meet its need, should the development come forward. So that's what we need to do in, in order to get that certified housing element. So we have the land in place right now for the current five hundred and ninety-six RENA, RENA target for the current housing element cycle. And so this is an exercise that we're going to need to do again for the upcoming housing element cycle, where we have a much higher number. So let me know if that answers your question, but essentially, you know, we had enough land in the right zoning, should the market, you know, come forward, should applications cross the counter and want to build in our city.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. I hadn't really thought of that distinction before, but obviously with seventeen-hundred-plus coming down the pike yet, you know, what we're doing as a city clearly isn't working, and we are going to have to think more aggressively or more out of the box to solve this. And, you know, it comes to my mind after my time on planning are things like the commercial linkage fee, and actually maybe requiring housing with some of these big development, commercial developments coming. So I think I'm going to consider an agenda item around that here soon, because we, we can't keep doing the same thing if we're this, this short of goals that, you know, and this is like our top priority. So very alarming that we have seventeen-hundred-plus coming down the RENA goal pipe next. But so are there any, like, so, so we don't make RENA, it doesn't seem like anyone meets RENA, like, so what? Or like, what, what, what are the repercussions to the city? Do we start losing our autonomy as, for local control over projects if we don't meet, like, what, like, what happens? Like, what, you know, what, what is the implication to San Carlos when we so clearly don't meet our RENA goal?
Well, I would say some of the implications are reflective in some of the new housing laws that have recently been passed over the last several years. Most of those have been centered around really promoting ADUs and getting more ADUs built, making it easier, not constraining ADUs, and certainly the number of ADUs that have been submitted and approved in our city has risen significantly since those laws have been passed. The other thing that the state does is they'll pass new legislation that basically will state that if a developer comes forward with a minimum amount of affordable units, that that project then is eligible to be fast-tracked with a limited amount of hearings with assurance that only objective standards, meaning you either meet the step back, you meet the height, you meet the density, and, and you essentially get approved. It makes it harder for cities to use reasons like it doesn't fit in, it doesn't let in, you know, we got to remove a story, we got to, you know, basically, it makes it harder for cities to not approve what the max, the maximum densities that are set forth in a local ordinance. So for example, if a city isn't meeting its RENA, or is, you know, you know, not making any progress whatsoever, the, the benchmarks for that particular law coming into play are then triggered. So for San Carlos, right now, we haven't had any proposals for a minimum of twenty percent affordable housing. So if and when we get those projects, we would need to abide by those, by those, by that fast-tracking mechanism, and really evaluating the project only under objective standards, and really, we wouldn't really be able to deny or, or remove a story simply because of a design, you know, motivated reason. So there, so through the new laws, I say, the state is paying, is, is starting to sort of make it, or, or just kind of make it more, what's the word I want to use, more certain that a developer will get their project approved if they submit it to a city.
I see. Okay, thank you for that. Just final quick thing, so yeah, I'm very hap, happy with what we've done on, on ADUs, but those, they qualify only as moderate, correct? Like, we'll never get very low or low out of an ADU, is that correct?
Well, that may not necessarily be the case. I mean, right now, we don't require that an ADU be deed restriction, restricted, but one of the things that we're looking at in conjunction or in collaboration with Twenty-One Elements is getting an ADU survey done on the affordability of those units. So if we can show the state that a certain percentage of these ADUs are in fact affordable, we can start to count those towards our below-market-rate RENA count. But we really have to make the case, so it takes a little bit of work, and a little bit of elbow grease, and really kind of doing the survey and making the case that some of them are in fact affordable. So that's work that's currently underway, and we're certainly going to be considering, you know, a program or how we go about doing that, because we are seeing a, a good uptick in the ADU, so it'd be nice to be able to count some of them as, as below-market-rate housing.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
John, I just wanted to add to your, your prior question, just one quick element, and that is that about ten years ago, the state of California ended redevelopment agencies statewide, and for cities like San Carlos, that's where our housing money had come from. There was a, an, a requirement under state law that every redevelopment agency, a percentage of their redevelopment dollars had to be spent on affordable housing. And so, you know, the, the money that went into Wheeler Plaza, the money for eight-seventeen Walnut, and the money for the Cherry Street project that we're looking at right now with hip housing, represents the, the final exhaustion of the balance that the city had. So, you know, we, we don't have that revenue source flowing from our tax dollars anymore. The council stepped in some years ago and created a commercial linkage fee, and we haven't really seen those dollars begin to, to flow yet, but there, as you, as you're aware, there's some large commercial projects in town being proposed right now, and, and they would trigger the commercial linkage fee, which could then start to, we could start to see tens of millions of dollars flow in to the city for the dedicated purpose of affordable housing. But, you know, the, sort of the revenues and the state priorities haven't matched themselves. You know, this has been a major priority for the state of California, but not, not in terms of funding. And that's something that the state's going to have to come to grips with, because even, even as they want to pass relaxed zoning standards and other bills we've seen related to that statewide, is still not going to do much to encourage the creation of housing without, you know, money to help subsidize the affordability component. And in fact, you know, there's a potential even that it works the opposite without money to do that. So the revenue is going to be key here going forward.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Lisa. As usual, very thorough presentation. So basically, we have two years to go to meet our current RENA lead, RENA numbers. And based on what Sarah said, we're, we're not going to meet them based on the percentages that we have to, that we're required to meet, correct? I mean, we'll have the number, but not, but not the allocation.
Correct, I would say with three hundred and sixty-four units remaining in the below-market-rate categories, it would take, I, I, I think we can all say it's not likely we're going to achieve that.
Right, okay. So then, starting in 2023, our new number is twenty-seven thirty-five, is that right?
Correct, that's most likely what it's going to be.
One of the things I wanted to clear up is that if we made no zoning changes at all, do we have the capacity within that, the area that we've already outlined for, for new housing to accommodate those twenty-seven-hundred units?
No, we do not, not with the current zoning in place.
All right, so we would, we'd have to, we'd have to fix that, right?
Yes, that's what we would need to work on with the current update of the housing element, so we expect to see changes in our current zoning in terms of how many units per acre, you know, are we, are, where are we going to land with that? But basically, that's, that's a big, big part of what we're doing. Yeah.
Does that involve changing allowable height requirements? Does it, does it involve expanding the, the, the physical area where we allow the more housing, or does it involve both?
It could involve both. It could involve an increase in height, it could involve an increase in density, it could involve adjusting densities, the intensity of new development in areas where it's not currently, I wouldn't say incidentally allowed, but areas with ever much lower density, it could involve that. So that is part of the exercise that it's under, that is underway right now, and so we're carefully looking at all of our sites and figuring out, and it's a conversation with the community, because we need to determine, you know, what is a community's appetite for increased height and increased densities, and where? And where does it make sense to do that? So, you know, we start with a conversation with the community, and then all of that would be brought forward to the Planning Commission and City Council eventually. So, so right now, we're kind of in the thick of it with looking at what criteria we should consider in terms of where to place that additional housing, you know, and what would need to happen in our zoning ordinance to accommodate that, that RENA, that future RENA.
So that, that also brings to mind this pending legislation SB nine, which, when I was told about it by Al, seems rather draconian. I, and I'm just wondering out loud, and I don't really expect an answer from you, because it really calls for speculation, but whether or not we can accomplish the goals of RENA without the imposition of SB nine, which, you know, anybody who's for local control obviously doesn't want to see. So that, that is a huge concern to a lot of people. And I guess my question is, when you have these conversations with, you know, the public stakeholders, are state-proposed pieces of legislation such as SB nine discussed in the meetings or brought to people's attention? And is it a factor in these discussions so that people understand that if we don't move in one direction, we may be forced to move in another?
Well, we haven't specifically talked about SB nine, because it's, it's new, it's just sort of surfaced at the beginning of this year. But I know that the Planning Commission has requested staff to come forward and talk about, you know, the bills that are in play for this year, the new set of housing laws that are being considered, just so that they can understand what might, you know, be coming down our path. You know, when the state, you know, passes these laws, we don't really have a choice, you know, they're, they go into place and we have to respond to them. So I know the Planning Commission is interested in learning more about what's, what's underway with the state, so we are going to bring, be bringing forward an informational item to them. And, and then as far as the community discussion, that's something that we're probably going to need to talk about at our, our next workshop, at least in terms of, you know, what's in play. I, I, I don't, you know, I mean, that's sort of on its own trajectory. I think the main thing that we want to talk about with the community is, you know, where they would like to see that additional increase in density or potentially height, including looking at things like minimum densities, which we currently don't have, and sort of see, you know, does this feel comfortable for them? Or if the height, additional height or additional density is not acceptable, then where do we need to put it? So the state gives us the number, but it's still a local decision to deter, to determine where the additional housing will go. So like you mentioned, I mean, there's a lot of things in play, and there's a lot of things to discuss, so we're, we're, we're working on it right now, and that's why it's taking a little bit longer to come back with the third workshop, which we're looking at, and like I said, late April, early May.
Yeah, you have a difficult task. I, I think at some point along the way, the public needs to understand, you know, the, the impact of some of these state proposals, I don't want to call them propositions, but these pieces of state legislation could really have on our decision-making, and that if we aren't aggressive enough and develop, and, and making sure that we build the housing where we know it needs to go, we may end up with SB nine-like legislation, which is- we may end up with SB nine-like legislation, which is which would be, you know, probably universally, not universally, but I I imagine there'd be a lot of people in town that wouldn't be very happy about that. Um but it Jeff mentioned something that also got got me to thinking that, you know, we built these, you know, the Cherry Project and the Eight Seventeen Walnut with the remaining um uh redevelopment funds. And we're banking on sort of replenishing that with linkage fees, correct? I mean, that's uh I mean, how else are we gonna afford to attract affordable housing developers unless we can contribute to their to their project? Do I understand that correctly?
Uh, yes, I think at one point, um we had an estimate of how much linkage, how how many dollars in linkage fees we might be able to collect. But if Al is on the line or Adam can respond to that, I think they would be more appropriate than me in terms of having a little bit more detail about where we're at with the commercial linkage fee.
Yeah. Well, I I'm not so much interested in the number as it occurred to me that if we're gonna, if we go down the road of discouraging these large commercial projects, we're basically gonna depress our the opportunity to collect our linkage fees, you know? I mean, you basically can't have your cake your your cake and eat it too. If you want more money for affordable housing, you have to you have to allow these commercial projects, which are gonna provide the, you know, the the seed capital, for lack of a better term, for these affordable housing developers. I'm just I'm just wondering out loud here about, you know, how this is all sort of related. So.
Greg, I see your your hand is up and your mic is up. Do you wanna?
I the only comment I have is that um I I'd like to have, you know, I don't want to limit the council's discussion about this interesting subject, but the the agenda item that we have before us is much more limited than the overall housing um issues. And uh it it it's just to receive a report. So I mean, we will have lots of opportunities to discuss.
I'm sorry if I was wandering too far afield.
I appreciate that.
I'm done with my questions. Thanks, Greg.
All right. Well, in light of that, I had some other questions, but I'll I'll refrain um just because it sounds like we've, I mean, they're kind of all in a similar direction uh with respect to how how do we get at lower levels of affordability. Uh so with that, Crystal, are there any members of the public who wanna make a comment?
No, there are no hands raised.
All right. Um any additional discussion from council on this item? Um so my my request would would just be to, you know, if it's appropriate, um Greg, I'm not sure, but just to, I know staff is constantly looking at upcoming state bills that could impact uh housing production. And um and then we've also got this housing element update. Um but I but it sounds like we'll need to talk about that in particular at another date, if I'm not mistaken.
Madam Mayor, you're just looking for a straight uh motion, right?
Yeah, Jeff, you were gonna comment?
Yeah, that's correct. Um we did touch base with our lobbyist in Sacramento um just a few weeks ago. And um she felt like it was a little early in the legislative session um to really report out on bills. She was expecting so many changes and deletions and additions, extractions and all those things that happen up there. Um so we'll continue to monitor it and um get you a report um when, you know, the feeling is that there's actually something um concrete to report on. And then, of course, the um the new housing element, um you know, we're working with the Housing Subcommittee right now and and um conducting public meetings and those kinds of things. And when that's um ready to come to the council, there'll be probably a number of opportunities for the council to um react and comment on that before they're asked to approve it.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. All right. All right. So with that, um I think it's time for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to accept the housing element, the annual progress report for twenty twenty, and direct staff to submit a report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
John can have it. All right. All right.
Housing Subcommittee.
Crystal, can you please call the role?
Councilmember Rec?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Parmenlohan?
Yes.
All right. Uh so this brings us to our next agenda item, New Business, um item ten C. It's quarter to ten quarter to eleven, so hopefully we can get the rest of this um done done um by eleven fifteen. If not, we'll have to entertain a motion to extend. Um so this item is consideration of adopting a resolution appropriating funds from the City's General Fund Economic Uncertainty Reserve to the San Mateo County Strong Fund and its Restaurant Brewery and Wine Relief Program. And we'll be taking a presentation from Adam Aronson. You're on mute.
And before Adam jumps in, I just wanted to remind the council the reason why this is on the agenda um was because the staff had made a commitment to bring any item that had previously been funded uh for support from council. Um when the money ran out, um if we heard back from that agency that, you know, there was still additional need. This program is ongoing. Um we've heard from SMCDA that, um you know, they don't have the money in the program to currently fund um um all the applications they've received from San Carlos businesses. And so we're bringing it back to you, and Adam can provide you with additional detail.
Thank you. Crystal, it looks like I just lost control. Would you mind give me it back to me?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as was stated, I'll be bringing before your resolution to appropriate between a hundred thousand and three hundred and eighty thousand from the City's General Fund Economic Uncertainty Reserve to the SMC Strong Fund and its Restaurant Brewery and Winery Relief Program. So to start with some background, at the January twenty-sixth San Mateo County Board of Supervisors meeting, supervisors approved one million dollars to fund the Restaurant Brewery and Winery Relief Program. And it's a program under the San Mateo County Strong Fund to assist businesses in the food and beverage industry impacted by the pandemic. This matched a one million dollar donation from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative and three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars that were contributed by the San Mateo Credit Union, Community Fund, and the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. Applications are reviewed by the San Mateo County Economic Development Association in coordination with the San Mateo Credit Union. Selected businesses can receive ten thousand dollars to help pay employees and rent as well as health and safety modifications and other needs caused by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So to be eligible, a business has to meet the following criteria. They have to have a brick and mortar physical location within San Mateo County. They have to provide a food service or sale of food or beverage-related goods, so that includes wineries and breweries as well. It does not include bars, though. The business also has to be in operation since March eleventh, twenty twenty, when the local state of emergency was proclaimed. And the establishment has to have been adversely impacted by the public health emergency. Applicants also cannot own more than five restaurants, breweries, or wineries within San Mateo County and must be in full compliance with all applicable regulations for the establishment. So that would include county health and safety requirements as well as any code enforcement issues from the city. Within San Carlos, forty-five applications were approved from businesses. The county is able to fund seven of these applications, which leaves thirty-eight that have been approved but unfunded. No information on applications can be released until after the grants have been awarded, so we don't know yet who has applied. And applications will be selected for award-the-all lottery system. I believe SMCDA is currently in the process of awarding these grants, but they're waiting to receive documentation back from the awardees. Most cities are awaiting the final number of approved restaurants before choosing whether to commit funding. We do have that now in San Carlos with forty-five approved applications. But a few cities have already contributed additional funding, and those include Hafen Bay, which contributed an additional seventy thousand, and San Mateo, which is contributing an additional three hundred thousand. Now, just to put things in perspective a little bit, San Mateo received a hundred and twelve applications, while in San Carlos received forty-six applications. Okay, one other thing we want to make sure you're aware of is the Restaurant Revitalization Fund. So the Restaurant Revitalization Fund is a twenty-eight-point-six-billion-dollar grant program that was enacted as part of the American Rescue Plan and is administered by the U.S. Small Business Administration. Eligible businesses may receive a tax-free federal grant that is equal to the amount of their pandemic-rated revenue loss calculated by subtracting the twenty-twenty grocery receipts from their twenty-nineteen grocery receipts. Individual applicants can receive up to ten million dollars in total grant amounts, but no more than five million per physical location. All businesses that are covered by the Restaurant Brewery and Winery Relief Program are eligible for the RRF, as well as some that are not eligible under the county program. So food carts and bars are eligible under the RRF, as well as businesses that did not begin operations till after March eleventh. Those that are ineligible include publicly traded companies and applicants with more than twenty locations. The SBA is still finalizing the details on when and how these grants will be awarded, but a state that's a small and minority-owned businesses will be prioritized. The latest info we've heard is that they expect to perhaps open an application portal sometime in April. So before the council this evening is a resolution to appropriate between one hundred thousand to three hundred and eighty thousand from the City's General Fund Economic Uncertainty Reserve. That fund currently has a balance of approximately seven-point-three million dollars. And this money would go to the SMC Strong Fund to assist San Carlos restaurants, breweries, and wineries. And then we also just wanted to make certain that you are aware of that Restaurant Revitalization Fund, but it's unclear at this time when these funds will become available or how many restaurants will be able to obtain them in San Carlos. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Uh Councilmember Rec?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it, I have three very quick questions. I'll I'll try to be super fast. Can someone just tell me how much we did we provided for the Small Business Relief Fund and for the Rental Assistance Fund?
We did a hundred and twelve thousand for each of them.
Okay. And then um is there a way to determine that, you know, if you sort of receive, are you eligible if you receive the Small Business Fund to get funds from the county for this grant program as well?
So there's there are two different phases to the initial SMC Strong Grants. There are the ones where we first contributed that one hundred and twelve thousand back around the spring of last year. Businesses that receive grants during that phase are eligible. There was then a second phase towards the end of the year in November. Uh and businesses that receive those grants are not eligible this time around.
Okay, I understand. And the 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 last question I had was just, can we um under this, can we make a recommendation to the county or do any sort of? Because it sounds like it's blind lottery, right, at this point? So is there a way that we can segment and to guarantee that a certain percentage goes to the wineries and breweries we have? I mean, my view is they've sort of been impacted more because they've had to close more than the restaurants, and we've done a lot for the restaurants already with the street closures and things like that. Is there a way to sort of say, hey, twenty-five percent of the funds have to be allotted to that?
We could ask, and I think they would be amenable to it. It's not something I've heard anyone bring up or propose yet in another city, but we could certainly.
We have more, I think, more wineries and breweries than some of the other places as well. So that's that was my only question. Thank you.
All right. Uh Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, I'll also go quickly here. Um thank you for the overview, Adam. Um it it, you know, definitely support doing something. Uh it's a tough situation, I know, with the federal program coming so potentially complete. I mean, that that could backfill their entire income loss between twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. I mean, that's that's pretty amazing. Uh but it sounds like that won't cover all restaurants. There that's that's gonna be prioritized in some way, and there's no expectation that that would cover all restaurants. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's hard to predict how many it will actually cover, but I I doubt it would cover all the restaurants that are seeking assistance right now, just based on the restaurants in the country that might it's available. But for those that do get it, it is a very significant amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, I I I'm just that I my reaction here is, you know, I just don't think we should be running lotteries as a government. Um so I don't like the lottery aspect of that program because it's it's such a big win. All your losses are filled in, restaurant over here, not over here. And then our county program is being run the same way. So there's a potential, some restaurants will get both, and it's like, you know, terrific. And some restaurants could get none, and that'll be devastating. So I'm just wondering out loud what we can do about that. I mean, I would like that all, you know, and and what is the timing of the federal program? When will there be clarification of that thing?
Yeah, they haven't announced anything official yet, but they've been saying that restaurants will business will be able to begin applying in April.
So that's coming right up. So this is tough. This is a tough one. I mean, I I I don't want to wait on anything, but it does almost feel like we should understand that program so that we can make sure the ones who don't qualify for that are the ones that we're helping. If if uh, you know, that I I would like to see us do that. Um the uh and then the lottery nature at at the county, um could we decide we don't like that if we're funding it? And we could say it's evenly distributed or based on number of seats or square footage or even maybe income? Could we decide that that's less lottery-driven and more equitably uh distributed?
Yeah, if there was a certain direction that the council wanted to go, we could certainly ask the county if they'd be open to that possibility. They've been somewhat flexible in the past with those sorts of requests, so I think they may be.
Okay. Thank you, Adam.
All right. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um Adam, thank you. Very uh thorough presentation. I'm just I just had a thought. Um is there any way to prioritize the the businesses that are in the greatest need of assistance? I don't know how we would do that, but and I don't know if the county's done that, but is there any way to rank them?
Not that we know of at this time. I think that was a a consideration when the county was initially developing the program, and they just determined it was too difficult to come up with a a hard and true way to measure that for them. So that's why they ended up going with the lottery system here.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I I don't know. Uh I don't know if there is a way that we can help bridge this gap until the federal money becomes available. Um I'm just wondering if, you know, maybe there's sort of a a minimum that we might want to consider that uh provides, you know, those businesses that that need it. And unfortunately, we don't know who needs it the most, but um maybe we can brainstorm on on what we can do in the for some sort of short-term relief uh until their uh, you know, federal money comes through. So I'm not really sure.
All right. Um all right. Looks like there's no, thank you, Councilmember Collins. Looks like there's no additional questions. Uh Crystal, is there any um?
Hands from the public?
Public?
No, no, no raised hands.
Okay, all right.
Um, Madam Mayor, um since there's no questions from the public, I I had a discussion with Jeff this afternoon about um some of our options. And Jeff, if you can recall that conversation, you had some thoughts as to what we might want to consider. I hate to put you on the spot, but, you know, it was, I thought it was a good discussion, and you had some ideas as to how we might approach this.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'm happy to share. A lot of it, as I recall, seemed to center around um, you know, the federal money that was beginning to flow. And um, you know, I know the council's feeling stretched uh in terms of having, you know, put a lot of money into a lot of different pots with still sort of a lot of unknowns. Um and so one thing that we had talked about was, you know, the 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 staff put this on the agenda tonight because of a prior obligation that we had made to you that we would be doing that. Um but it seems like right now the the council, you know, may just be faced with some additional uncertainties from, you know, outside factors that you may want to just see play out a little bit before um before you commit additional funding as a potential option. So maybe we can. Did I remember that right, Ron?
I I I think so. And I think now that you're mentioning it, I think we were talking about maybe uh bringing it up uh like re, you know, re-agendizing it for a future meeting uh based on how we see things play out with federal government.
Yeah, I I guess, I mean, my my feeling on this, this is a tough one, I think, because in addition to the funds that we've already appropriated. my understanding, we've, we've spent about $125,000 on the street closure program downtown, which directly benefited many of the restaurants. So I'm a little bit intrigued by Councilmember Rack's suggestion that if we do anything, if we can potentially gear it towards some of those other businesses that maybe didn't benefit from that first round. So for example, you know, bars have had to be completely shuttered unless they serve food, right, and restaurants, or the, and then the wineries have been challenged, so it's a little bit of a conundrum because I feel like we just don't have much information, and I don't know. Of those 45 who provided applications, it would be curious to try to understand the distribution of those applicants across, you know, the different business segments to, to try to understand the need because clearly there's just not enough resources to make everybody a grant. So, Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if Vice Mayor McDowell, she hasn't had a chance to speak yet. I don't want to.
Well, you, you put your hand up.
Okay.
I just went in order.
Faster, okay.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think for me, I, I, I spoke to some of the businesses, or actually, you know, they reached out to me and, and spoke to them who were, you know, have applied, didn't get funded, and, and, you know, the sense I got is for some of these businesses, they are sort of, they are really struggling and are in a very difficult situation and, and not sure they can survive, and given how programs like the PPP program and others, you know, even though the applications came out and stuff, we could be talking about a couple months before people get funded, and I think for some of these businesses, it could be the difference between them staying open and closing. So I'm inclined to do something now to try to help them, and, and whether it's, you know, we, you know, there's 36 businesses, I think, or 37, whatever the number is at this point. I mean, if we can help some of them, 38?
That's what.
So whatever, if we can help, thank you, Ron. If we can help some of them, I, I think we should go ahead and do that.
Thank you, Council, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I concur with Adam. I think that we should try and help. I think I would be interested in maybe looking at $110,000 because that more closely matches our original contributions for rental assistance and for the San Mateo County Strong Program. That would be 11 grants, so it would make a tiny dent in the need. And I liked the idea of looking at perhaps a percentage to the wineries and breweries who really have struggled the most in, in several ways, so with the closures. So I'm throwing that out there. Yeah, I guess that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, I'll just, well, I guess I do agree we should do something now, so I, I appreciate the thoughts on that, Senator Adam. The, you know, I think I saw we have $7 million in our rainy day fund. This is a rainy day. This is when you spend that money, and, you know, we certainly have small businesses in town struggling. So I, I do support doing something now. It is awkward with the federal program in the way that may roll out, but, you know, us trying to over-optimize right now really isn't the right answer. So I do agree with doing something now. The magnitude of that, I, 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 I'm not, I, I'll be interested in everyone else's thoughts. I mean, I, you know, the, the perception, we have $7 million in a rainy day fund. You know, why do we want to wait around until after the rainy day and then still have, like, you know, nearly $7 million in a rainy day fund? I, I don't understand that. So if we do something, let's do something. And I would say, I, I don't like the lottery aspect. I, I can get on board with helping folks who haven't been helped much in the past, so if that's wineries and breweries, and I, you know, if we can flavor it in that direction, I support that. I'm not sure how that actually works, but I would support that. But I would like it to see if we can, you know, of the folks who have qualified, let's get it out to them in an equitable manner. So, you know, if we can propose that to the county, I'd like to see us do it, and we could study that or talk about it, just, you know, a bit off the cuff. I think basing it on the number of full-time equivalent employees would be a good way to do that. Like, you know, each restaurant, how many employees have, do they have on staff, you know, based on eight-hour days? That would be inequably, inequitable. Whatever dollar value we decide, that would be a fair way to distribute it. I don't like the idea of some people getting plenty and others nothing. I, I just, I don't understand the policy of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Collins?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I, I think what Sarah recommended is a reasonable number, 110. I, I, I'm not clear on how we distribute it. I think we've got to work on that. But I think the number's about right. It, it leaves, it leaves us the opportunity to do something else down the road as, as it becomes clearer and more certain what the, you know, when the federal money, federal relief is going to come through. And we may not need to do anything, but I think it's, that, that's probably a modest beginning.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. So my recollection, and, and Adam Aronson, I, I know that you don't know the answer to this, but, you know, when we were talking about the Childcare Fund and appropriating dollars for that, there was very much pushback from the credit union who was administering this program to not create additional exceptions by city. And so I would be surprised if they would, I, I mean, I, I don't know, but I think we need to find out whether or not they would make, they would allow us to customize criteria in this particular instance, and I think just given the fact that there's so much needs, you know, out, out there, and 38 are already qualified, but there's not funds available for them demonstrates, you know, kind of a hurdle has been met. So I don't know, Jeff or Adam Aronson, could you provide a little bit of insight here?
Yeah, I, I was gonna have, I was gonna ask the same question. I, I think the way, I think the direction we'd be looking for from the council tonight would be, you know, whether or not you'd be willing to put the money into the program regardless of exception. Of course, we understand your desire to create the exception for wineries and breweries and bars, so we, we would certainly have those conversations with them. In some instances, the programs have been amenable to, you know, local amendments, and in other situations, they've not. You know, then the, the selection criteria is not, that was something that was talked about in the beginning of these programs, and that was something that the county and the program were not interested in, in getting to a level of detail, and I suspect it's just because they, they don't have the staff to make those types of reviews and verify the data that's being provided by the businesses to make sure that it's accurate and people aren't just reporting, you know, the most advantageous numbers that they can to qualify regardless of reality. So we can have those conversations, but if they say no, do you still want to put the money into the program is my question.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think from my perspective, I, I appreciate the proposed amount from Vice Mayor McDowell and supported by Councilmember Collins. It seems like a reasonable amount and in line with what we've done in the past. I think my, my preference would be that we move forward and, and see if we can't maybe try to support some of those businesses who haven't been as represented in previous funds, if there's a way to do that. But short of that, I, I think that was, that would be the only additional criteria I might put on top of that. Councilmember Rack, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to, I think the, the 110 is a good, good starting point as well, and I think it's, as we said with some of the other items, we're willing to come back and look at it as funds get depleted. And I would just, I, I think, Jeff, I hear what you're saying. I think, I, I, I think it's good to just kind of make the request as the mayor has pointed out, just, especially I think you can discern, maybe, I don't know how the applications are, like, if something's a brewery versus a winery or restaurant, it might be easier to, than in some other cases to discern it. So I, I'd love to see if we can just include that as a request, and I'm happy to support it either way because I think, you know, helping whoever we can is important.
Okay. Yeah, and we, we will absolutely make that request and, and, you know, make a strong case for it as well. But at, at the end of the day, as we've found in the past, it, it won't be a decision that's left up to us.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Collins and then Councilmember Dugan, and we may need to extend the meeting.
Thank you. I, I, I won't make it too long. Just a question for Jeff. I mean, can we make this sort of a conditional approval where we're conditionally approving the money pending feedback that we get from the Strong Fund?
Yeah, I mean, that, that was sort of my question. Are you making this contribution contingent on, you know, that, that particular issue, or are you simply saying we want to contribute the money? Our desire is that it, that it predominantly aid those businesses that haven't qualified for the other grant funding and the other rounds. You know, if, if that's the case, then we're good to go. If it's contingent, then we'd have to circle back around with you once we get clarification.
Well, from, just speaking only for myself, I, I think I, I like the latter suggestion. In other words, we, we allocate the money, you know, we, we give the money, we grant the money, but we, and we say our preference, but ultimately we leave the decision up to the, to the county and the, and the fund. That, and that, I'm just speaking for myself.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I guess I agree basically with all of that. So I, I agree with that amount, 110. You know, I would just say that seems like a small amount, so I like the idea of that is a good, good start and, and bridges us until we see what this RRF fund may do. So I would like us to revisit this once that is more clear. And, and I like the idea of let's just do this and delegate that authority to allow a preference for restaurants and breweries if that can make sense. And I would just ask my colleagues, does anyone else, you know, want to push against the lottery nature of this? Again, I just don't understand the policy or how that's a good thing. I'd much rather give everyone half than give all of it to only half the people.
Well, John, I understand your sentiment. I, I, I generally agree with it, but I don't want it. I mean, we can state it. I think we can say that we don't like it, but ultimately, you know, we, we want to, we want to allocate the money, but you know, how it's allocated ultimately is not really going to be our, our call if, if we go down that road.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, I'm sorry, Adam, were you going to say something?
I'd say I agree with Ron. We just need to, it, it's just the way the process is.
It, are, with anybody?
We probably need a motion to extend a few minutes.
Okay. I'll move to extend the meeting to 11:20.
I'll second.
Can we do 11:25?
All right, 11:25.
We still have, yeah. I second that, too.
Crystal, can you please take the roll?
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohin.
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like we're ready for a motion then on this particular item. So who, who wants to take a stab at that, assuming one wants to forward a motion on this?
Sure. I will move to adopt Resolution 2021 dash.
22.
22. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos appropriating $110,000 from the City's General Fund Economic Uncertainty Reserve and the San Mateo County Strong Fund and its Restaurant Brewery and Winery Relief Program with a intention of directing more funds towards breweries and wineries which have not received as much aid in the past.
Second.
All right. Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohin.
Yes.
Okay, so with that, we move to agenda site, setting. Items listed in this agenda setting section will be considered by the council for placement on a future agenda. No action will be taken on these items at this meeting. And we have one that's been proposed, consideration of agendizing a review of the heritage tree ordinance. So whoever requested this, okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just requested, I know we've had a lot of emails about heritage trees recently, and I had a chance to talk to staff about kind of our current ordinance and thought it would be good to raise it to potentially review this. Right now, I, I'm concerned two things. One, sort of enforcement around sort of the illegal cutting down of trees. There's, that happens a couple times a year. According to staff, we had an instance near Burton Park that cut down a valley oak, and the fine was only a couple thousand dollars, and they could replace it with any tree they wanted to that was from a list, according to my understanding. So I think it'd be worth to look at increasing the penalties around that. We have, you know, as it's part of our, sort of the culture of the community, and to be able to, one, look at the penalties to potentially increase them and, and bring them in line with some other cities, and two, I think that if you replace, if you cut down a tree, regardless of it's legal or legally, that you should have to replace it with the same kind of tree. Right now, you can sort of pull from the à la carte. So if you cut down a valley oak and it's unhealthy, you could put up a different tree. At this point, I think it's, a one-to-one replacement would be a better approach. I wanted to raise it before the council to see if you were open to considering it.
I'd support it.
I support it.
All right, so it looks like there's, you've got a majority, so that'll be on a future agenda. Jeff?
That's correct. I'll talk with the staff tomorrow as we take a look at our next few agendas and workload issues and see where we can fit this in for you all to get it back to you.
All right, great. Thank you. All right. Are there any other items that people want to discuss for potential future agenda? Councilmember Rack, you have your hand up?
Madam Mayor, we, we heard a lot from the residents at Chilton today, and I, I know we've approved the projects, but I, I guess I'm confused because it sounds like there were sort of two different plans, and I'd love to understand kind of at least be brought back and advised kind of what changed and what was different and get, get a, at least a sense of if there were some concerns about that. If, if we sort of, it sounds like there's some confusion. I'd love to get some clarity for the community and for us around, around that issue.
Jeff, if you're talking, we can't hear you. We saw your camera come on. I don't know if you're.
Yeah, I was just waiting to see if the conversation unfolded, and, and then I was, I was going to kind of kick it over to John because if we're talking about this, then we've got a recusal.
Yeah, forgot he needs to step out.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead.
Give him a minute.
All right. So, so Councilmember Rack, I'm, I'm not super clear, like, what is that you're looking for? Because I think it sounds like the, there was different requests made of the community. It sounds like you're saying that you're confused, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to better understand what specifically.
Sure.
Is it like a study session?
I, I guess I'd like to get in a review or some.
Or report?
From the staff, a report from staff about, there has been discussion about sort of the 2009 and that we, or, or sort of proposal, and then it sounds like there were some changes that were made, and there were two different things in the, one in the staff, in our, sort of our documents, and then one that was presented at the council meeting. There was some, you know, this sort of concrete circle and some other things and the path through, and I, I would just like to get, I think it'd be worth to have, with, rather have a discussion that the, we can clarify that issue because it seems like the community's confused on it. There's been, it sounded like there were some, two different things presented, and the community doesn't believe what was, what was agreed to in 2019 that we approved for a plan is what we funded. And so I think there's some disparity in that, and I, I just want to understand what that is and get clarification from that.
Well, you know, I, I, I was talking to Jeff earlier today about it, and Jeff, if you're still there, can, can you just sort of give us some clarity on, on what's going to happen? I think you said that we're pretty close. And this could be work with the community.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think based on, you know, many of the issues of the actual specific things that the community has shared with us, Yeah, I mean, I I I think based on, you know, many of the issues of the actual specific things that the community has shared with us, I think those are things that the the staff can work out. I think um sort of the primary confusion, Councilmember Rack, um comes that what they're citing from two thousand nineteen is a master plan, right? And a master plan is a conceptual document, so it talks about, you know, desired elements within a project as opposed to an actual engineering document, which is a plan that you build, right? Um, you know, you you might want a four-bedroom house or, you know, with a bonus room and those kinds of things. But what you envisioned might change slightly because of the topography of the land, the costs involved or the need to build additional infrastructure, those kinds of things. So you might, you know, have thought, we're gonna build it right here, but instead you end up building it five feet to the left kind of thing. Um, you know, so there seems to be quite a bit of that. There seems to be quite a bit of sort of misinformation floating around. I mean, like no idea where the hundred and fifty thousand dollar maintenance number comes from. Um, that's not coming from us. Um, so there's, you know, there's a lot of things that are being talked about. You know, the the um, the concrete pathway in the roadway was a, was an addition that was recommended by our maintenance staff so that they didn't um, you know, uh disturb the the park, you know, with their tire marks in the winter and create, you know, mud pits and that kind of stuff. The park certainly is going to require more maintenance than it has in the past. It's gonna have thing, you know, play areas and things that need to be maintained are gonna be broken and vandalized. And, you know, we're gonna have to get our folks in there more frequently than than we have historically. And so they suggested that, you know, as a way to help preserve the park. The community obviously has had a strong reaction to that. We don't feel particularly strongly about that particular element. Um, so our plan is to just take the circle out in its entirety and to reduce that pathway, the central pathway to the same material and width as the rest of the pathways in the park. That that pathway is shown in the plan. So we'd just be, you know, making it the same as as all the other things. And I understand there's some issues about like, you know, do we put the garbage can here or do we put it twenty feet over there? Those are things that we can work out. Um, you know, there's there's not a lot of, um, there's not, there don't seem to be a lot of really significant issues here in terms of, you know, like a need to redesign or go through a a big process um to do this. So I are, you know, Amy's all over this. Um, um, we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow with the um uh, uh, design architects to to talk about some options and we'd like to keep the project rolling. And of course, we'll be, you know, we we sent out some information this afternoon to the neighborhood. We'll send out some more information um as, you know, as some um stuff as we can make tweaks and changes. Um, I think we'll have a good project here and and we really appreciate the feedback that that we've gotten from the residents um uh on this and and we're looking forward to a good project.
Okay, sorry, I was gonna, I mean, I just, I I think that's fine. If you feel that you can handle at the staff level and and can manage it from there, then I I would withdraw my request. I think that's fine. And if we run into issues, then it needs to be brought up, then we can bring it up after. So, thank you.
Greg, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, I I just wanted to um check in on on the uh discussion to make sure we understood where we if this isn't on the agenda for agenda setting and it was, that was answering a question, so I'm okay with it.
All right, thank you. Understood. All right. Councilmember Collins, you're.
No, I I'm good.
Okay, all right. Uh, Cr- Crystal, can you bring, can you text John and let him know to, there he is?
There he is.
Perfect, okay. All right, um, any other items to propose for future agendas? All right, so we'll end the meeting two minutes early and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Good evening.